You're on.
Good afternoon. Welcome to today's work session. Today is Tuesday, November 12th, 2024. It is approximately exactly 1:00 p.m. I am Mayor Portem Bencomo. We will start this meeting today with the moment of silence for the brave women, men and women of the United States Armed Forces and the courageous women and men of the Las Cruces Police and Fire Departments as they keep our city safe 24/7. Please join me in the pledge. Thank you. Before I continue to our agenda items, I do have a closed meeting statement to read to all of you and hang, hang with me because there's lots of names I gotta read. So, um, let's get started. The City of Las Cruces, oh, that's, is that right? Yeah, right?
Yes.
Yes, okay. My apologies. The City of Las Cruces, South, the City of Las Cruces, South Central Solid Waste, Metro Narcotics, uh, Mervda and the Animal Service Center met in closed session at 11:05 a.m., November 12th, 2024. The following were in attendance. Patrick Peck, Rosa Montoya, Adolfo Cárdenas, Bernice Navarro, Scott McFaul, Renee Reese, Laura Olgin, um... Lieto López, Albert Flores, Clint Dacre, Barbara Bencomo, Jeremy Story, Jacey Borrego, Cassie McClure, Becky Graham, Becky Corin, Joanna Bencomo, and Connie Tamepaugh, Erica Hackes, uh, Roberta Marquez, Maria Sanchez, Josh Saffel, and Chris Gardner. The meeting adjourned at 11:21 a.m. Statement for the record, the closed meeting discussion was limited to the items as stated in the posted notice. The purpose of the closed meeting is to, was to conduct an, an audit exit conference for the fiscal year '24 for the City of Las Cruces, South Central Solid Waste Authority, Metro Narcotics, Mesia Valley Regional Dispatch Authority, and Animal Services Center of the Mesia Valley, which is closed pursuant to NMSA Section 1265 to 12614. Here we go. Uh, first is jobs of the week, and I don't think we have jobs of the week today. Um, so second up is pets of the week with Carol Nielsen.
Good afternoon. I'm Carol Nielsen, the Digital Content Specialist with the Animal Services Center of the Mesia Valley. This week for the pets of the week, we have our cat of the week, Jack, number 78685, if you would like to look him up online. I'm a sweet four-month-old domestic short hair who can be a bit timid at first, but once I feel comfortable, my playful side shines through. I sometimes have a bit of a wobble, but that doesn't stop me from chasing other, after toys and having fun. I'm looking for a calm and loving home where I can grow into the confident cat I know I can be. And our dog of the week is Jessie. She is our longest-term stay at the shelter, so we would love to see her get adopted. Um, her number is 66337. I'm always on the move, whether it's chasing my tail or playing fetch with the shelter staff. My days are filled with toys, treats, and lots of fun. I love learning new tricks, especially when there's a tasty reward involved. My energy is contagious, and I'm known for bringing smiles to everyone's faces, but I do need some help reining in my energy, especially around other dogs sometimes. What I'm really looking for is a patient and experienced forever home where I can share all of my love and joy. Um, and this week, we are going to be teaming up with the Elks Lodge for a silent auction. We will have some adoptable animals there, so come out and see us on Saturday, uh, from 11 to 2:00 p.m. And as always, you can find us on social media, and also feel free to visit our website at www.aascmv.org. Just as a quick update about our, uh, website, we are currently experiencing some software issues, and so there is a little bit of a glitch when you're looking at adoptable pets or recently, um, found pets that are brought into the center. So if you have any questions or concerns, reach out to us by phone, or you're also welcome to come into the center to ask questions and see what we have on site.
Thank you so much, as always, Carol. Uh, first up on our agenda is 3.1 state legislative priorities. That will be Barbara Bencomo, Natalie Green, Christine Rivera, and Larry Horne, who is our city lobbyist. Barbara.
Good afternoon, Mayor Portem and Council. Uh, this afternoon, we bring forward for your consideration, um, some items of interest for the upcoming 2025 state legislative session. Before you is the process that we typically follow as we prepare for the legislative sessions that start in January. Kind of in the late summer, we start discussions, and those are inclusive of our state legislators, of course. Um, we, um, like to hear about what the interests and concerns are. We are able to share things from the, the city's perspective as well, mostly from our adopted plans and priorities. Um, we go through a process where we take a look at what our adopted plans are indicating for prioritization for our capital outlay requests. And then here, um, at today's work session, we have the opportunity to bring those forward to you to get your input, um, on those items that are proposed for, uh, capital outlay priorities. We also talk about upcoming legislation, um, that might be of interest to the city and might be of interest for you all to support. And so today... ...with Grow Funds, there's always a possibility that the guidelines change during the session. So I'm, I'm providing what we, the knowledge we had based on, on the 2024 session, but this is something that, um, we need to be able to, to respond to during the session, depending on what the guidelines are. Um, Grow Funds or Junior Money, as it, as it was known in the past, typically, uh, was available if there were funds left over. So the funding amount, uh, after the budget, so the funding amount varied, and I think that's still the case. And that's why there's, with Grow Funds, there's a little bit of uncertainty about what might be available and what the parameters might be, but that's something that we're keeping track of so that if we do have something that matches, that we're able to... Accessibility of our spaces for a greater number of our, uh, population. And also, we've noted that there's an economic impact, uh, for the larger number of playing fields allows us to schedule tournaments and other large events here that have, um, an economic and business, uh, impact in our community. So the capital outlay request for, for this phase of the complex would be 5.9 million. The total project would be, uh, tw- over $20 million. And you can see the funds that we've addressed, or that we have invested to this particular, s- project scope, um, other funds received, which, um, is 3.4 million. We still have to figure out the $8 million, but this is sort of overall how we're doing the, the project planning for this scope for East Mesa. So again, the highlight is the capital outlay request of, of almost $6 million for this project. The next project is something that, uh, will, you'll remember because recently we have adopted the master plan for the Brannigan Library, um, uh, renovation and expansion of li- library services. So this scoped project, uh, for the Brannigan Library renovation has an $18 million, uh, total cost. Um, we are anticipating that we could request this on our 2026 Go Bond Initiative, perhaps for around $11 million. We have received other funds for, from the state for furnishings, from the TID for planning, in the amount of 1.4 million. And our capital outlay request would be $5 million, and we would still be looking at finding, uh, an additional $600,000 for the project. But this will follow the master plan that you just adopted, uh, for facility renovation of the ground floor, ADA improvements, um, expanding the lobby, et cetera. Uh, so this would be the, the phase one or first step in creating the state-of-the-art library with enhanced services for the community. And really, this is a regional effort. Our library is utilized, um, not only by our city residents, but those in the region who come to, um, make use of the facility and to, um, to check out books and, and other materials. The next item on the list of potential capital priorities is inductive charging. This is for our electric buses. Um, our electric buses right now cannot meet the duty cycle on one charge. So that means going around the city in the loops that they're, they're routing. Um, and so what happens is they would have to be swapped out at some point for diesel buses. If we were to be able to, uh, plan, design, and construct, uh, an inductive charging system, then every time the buses would come into the intermodal transit facility, they'd be able to be charging while they're waiting there, uh, to get the next passengers onboard, and actually, that would provide sufficient charge, uh, for their duty cycle. This project, um, has a $5 million total cost, uh, with a $600,000 city investment. We are anticipating to, that we will apply for federal low-no funds, and that's the Funds TBD grants that you see there of 4.2 million dollars. So the capital outlay request for this particular project would be $500,000. And the community impact, in addition to our operating efficiencies, would certainly be, um, improved emissions, uh, from the greater utilization of our electric buses. Another potential capital outlay item, uh, with our Museum of Nature and Science is a re, uh, redesign of the displays at that museum. The request for this, uh, capital outlaw, uh, capital outlay priority would be just under $400,000 to allow for better engagement with visitors through the, uh, redesign of the facility's, um, um, displays. Active transportation. This is an item that has been a capital outlay priority, uh, for a couple of years, kind of like the East Mesa Recreation Complex. And that is because as we continue to implement our active transportation plan, there are elements of many projects that could be expanded to accommodate act, a better active transportation scope. Um, the community impact would be increased safety, uh, comfort and convenience for our facilities. That includes, um, streets, uh, transit str- shade structures, bicycle facilities, trees, anything that enhances the safety of our, uh, transportation, uh, in the community. The capital outlay request is $4 million. We have received $400,000. We have spent $2 million of city funds, and, and we have still, uh, about $600,000 in other funds to identify, uh, for this project. Uh, this, the identified improvements would total to $7 million. We have a housing project on the, um, list of potential capital outlay priorities, although we are still evaluating funding and financing options for this project, but we bring it to you for discussion and, and consideration. We are still scoping this out. Um, and this is the project that will increase the inventory of housing for veterans, uh, workforce, workforce, and senior, uh, rental units. It'll be 218, uh, units in the El Paseo MRA. And again, this is something that we could potentially look at, uh, as a capital outlay request, but we are still finalizing some numbers. So that's why you see the asterisk on this one. But potentially, the capital outlay request could be $4 million on a project cost that's almost $50 million. So a large project. One of the proposed capital outlay priorities has to do with ADA compliance, and this is important because it will allow our facilities, and specifically City Hall and Municipal Court, to be more accessible to the public. Uh, these are two facilities that are heavily used by the community, and there are a number of improvements that could be made, uh, to make these facilities more accessible, including parking ramps, um, automated doors, uh, redesigning floor space, handrails, um, again, specifically at City Hall and Municipal Court. The total project cost would be about $5 million, $1 million of city funds spent, $1 million of capital outlay, and then $3 million still to be determined. And, and with many of our, as with many of our capital outlay priorities, depending on the funding that we have, we actually received, we can certainly scale the improvements we're able to put in. Uh, but this is what we, uh, think would be a great, uh, ask. And you, you may have, um, noted that in the governor's portal, she specifically talked about facilities, uh, that need to comply with, with regulations. So this would certainly fit that, that description or that guidance. You all are also familiar, I think, with our capital outlay priority that's been continuing, uh, regarding our wastewater and septic systems. Um, this is something that you've seen for many years because there are many, uh, many parcels or homes that are on septic systems that are not connected to our utilities. Uh, utilities let me know that, um, back in the early 2000s, mid 2000s, uh, when we started looking at the inventory of, uh, parcels in the city that were on septic system, it was around 1,800, uh, units. We have been able to convert about, uh, 263 to city utilities. So there are many more that we would like to address. Um, and as you see here, the community impact of this is in protecting our aquifer from pollution and helping to ensure the reliability of the city's drinking water supply. So this will continue to be a priority for us. Uh, we will continue to utilize whatever funds we receive, uh, towards expanding our, our utility systems and potentially connectivity, uh, to individual homes. And you're gonna hear a little bit about that later when, um, Larry talks about the enabling legislation that we're going to, uh, bring forward, hopefully, in the next session. Uh, and one note on this slide, the reason that there's no dollar amounts in the, in the city's investment line is just because these are enterprise funds. As those of you who are very familiar with the utilities, uh, business and the board, know that for enterprise funds that are generated by rates, this is something that we're unable to use, uh, for this particular type of project. So that's why we're always looking for other funding sources to be able to, to make headway on this. Another potential capital outlay priority involves street and park lighting, specifically for safety, uh, reasons. Um, safety and efficiency. We've got streetlights in some areas that, um, don't have, uh, bulbs that provide adequate lighting, and we have some park facilities with insufficient or outdated lighting. So, and we're targeting a few parks, Valley View, Apodaca, Young, and Lyons, for example, with perimeter lighting for this particular project. This project cost for both streets and parks would be just over $7 million. We've invested just under $4 million. The capital outlay request would be just over $3 million, and we'd have about $400,000 to, to still, uh, figure out for completing this project. We've got some police regional response vehicles, uh, as a potential capital outlay, uh, priority. LCPD responds increasingly outside of the city in assistance to, uh, our state police, and this specifically, uh, pertains to SWAT, uh, activities. So in order to not, uh, strain the fleet, we are, uh, requesting capital outlay of $500,000 in order to fund five vehicles that would be assigned to SWAT for this purpose. And you'll note here in the community impact, over 50% of the SWAT callouts are, callouts are outside the city limits. So this is also another regional impact, um, uh, in, in the assistance that we provide to the area for this purpose. And then finally, uh, another potential capital outlay priority is the Police Real-Time Crime Center. You'll probably remember this from our list last year. Uh, we did receive some fundings, funding from the legislature last year. We've also received some federal funds as well for equipment. Um, the, the community impact of implementing a real-time crime center is to be able to provide real-time and intelligence to officers so that they can respond, uh, more safely and act on better info. It can also help, uh, with locating missing persons, tracking stolen vehicles. But in order to do that, we're renovating, um, part of our police station and equipping it with, um, the technology and systems needed it in order to, uh, bring this, uh, real-time crime center to life. Also, in the community, we would need a number of cameras and equipment. And so the capital outlay request for this is $1 million total project cost for. We've invested just over a million. We've received just under a million with about $800,000 still to identify for this project. With, but, with respect to the Grow Funds that I mentioned earlier, the proposals for these funds will be developed over the next month or so, and then certainly during the legislative session, as we get more guidance as to what the fu- funds availability is going to be and what the priorities are going to be from the legislators. But we have a few things that we'd like to start preliminarily developing for funding, and one of them includes a library bookmobile. Uh, this would be a program, uh, again, to provide a greater, greater access of library services to our community and, and to our region. Um, it would involve the acquisition of a, of a bus, uh, to, to provide this service. So that's, that's one item proposed by our Quality of Life Department. Um, another potential Grow Project is the acquisition of emergency generators for some of our facilities that would help with our community resiliency and response in, um, in times of emergency, uh, for heating and cooling stations, et cetera. Um, then we also have a potential ask for retrofits of our transit buses to provide greater security for our drivers. Unfortunately, we have had some incidents where the drivers have, um, um, been assaulted. Um, and so we definitely want to make sure that they can perform their job in a safe environment. And so those retrofits of the, of, uh, existing buses could potentially be a, a Grow Program request. And then, uh, finally, as the, um, police department expands, uh, some of their use of technology, there's a proposal for a drone as a first responder program, uh, something that has been implemented in other communities, uh, to target high priority calls with longer, longer-range drones, and, and similar to the Real-Time Crime Center, providing better information so that response, uh, can be made without, uh, the same degree of ambiguity that we might have right now for some, some certain types of calls. Um, I've, I've just gone over a long list of, of potential priorities for the city. As you know, we have our partner agencies that are at the Community of Hope campus, and Natalie's gonna go over some of their capital outlay priorities. These are not priorities that we would necessarily be submitting to the state. They would submit them, but they're on our campus. They're on our partners. So we think it's helpful to coordinate and to know what the requests are so that we can also support them. So I'm gonna go ahead and turn it over to Natalie.
Good afternoon, Natalie Green, for the record. Um, just to note, there was a fifth logo, El Caldito. It's disappeared over lunch, but there was El Caldito logo up there, uh, before I left for lunch. So I didn't forget you guys. Um, so the campus is made up of five alliance agencies. Uh, the first is Mesia Valley Camiho, Casa de Peregrinos, Jardín de los Niños, Amador Health, and El Caldito. And so they work together to advocate for, uh, campus-wide projects. Um, the four that were selected this year for capital outlay priorities is the kitchens, uh, the de-escalation office, uh, some solar for Building One, and then some master plan implementation. Uh, the first project is the kitchens. It is a 20,000-square-foot, uh, soup kitchen and licensed commercial community kitchen. It's received approximately $2.9 million in capital outlay, so it's under design. Um, they'll start working on, uh, site prep and demolition. It is consistent with the adopted master plan. The estimated total project cost is about $15 million, and so they would be requesting, uh, $5 million this year. Uh, the second is the de-escalation office. So it's the conversion of an existing patio into additional office space. It would be dedicated to help people in crisis. It gives them sort of a safe place away from the rest of the buildings. It did receive congressional-directed spending, so we would be seeking capital outlay in the amount of 410,000. Uh, the third is, again, the solar for Building One. Uh, Building One is the building that houses Amador Health and the current, uh, El Caldito Soup Kitchen. So it's approximately $600,000 to, to provide, uh, solar, and that would improve, um, the service provision as, on the campus. So they can, um, dedicate it, more of their funding to direct client services rather than, um, costly electric. The fourth is just a menu of options. So depending on the funding that we receive, we could select, um, very particular projects. Uh, as part of the master plan and the traffic impact analysis that we conduct, conducted, uh, there was a number of recommendations, um, including some HOCS systems on Amador and a HOCS system, system on Valley, um, some bus lane and turning lane improvements, a third, um, emergency exit-only driveway. Uh, right now, there's two driveways off Amador. We would like an emergency exit off Valley. Um, some potential improvements to the lateral. Uh, as Council may be awa- be aware, that lateral, uh, that Amiho lateral next to the campus was buried, and so it, uh, provides an opportunity to do some trail extensions and fencing, um, and some additional, uh, pedestrian improvements in that area. And then... And then a parking lot reservation renovation. So the city acquired this parcel here, and it's currently a dirt lot, so some additional parking lot improvements would benefit the entire campus. And with this, I'll pass it over to Larry.
Thank you to Natalie. Yep, to go over legislative policy items, we have Larry Haran. Thank you, Larry.
Thank you, Barbara. Good afternoon. Larry Haran, lobbyist for the City of Las Cruces. It's always a pleasure to be here in front of you. I appreciate the chance to talk to you about this upcoming legislative session. The 2025 legislative session, one thing we're definitely going to see is there's a dramatic turnover in the members of the legislature. Out of a total of 112 members, the House has 13 new members coming in, and the Senate has 16 out of 42. So that's the largest turnover we've seen in the New Mexico State Senate in a very long time. Coming out of the last election, there was not dramatic change as far as the makeup of the legislature. The Republicans, both in the House and the Senate, picked up one additional seat, and so the Democrats lost one seat, but it's still a very strongly Democrat majority in both houses. As we come into the session in January, this is a 60-day legislative session. Just as a reminder, a 60-day session is open. It's open season for legislators to introduce anything that they feel that they would like the state to consider. As a 30-day session, they're limited into what they can, the scope of legislation they can consider. 60-day session, it's open to everything. As far as trends and forecasts, still, we are still on a positive economic growth for the budget for the state of New Mexico. Although last year we had record excess revenue levels in excess of $3 billion, we're still seeing trends of more in excess general fund revenue, although the latest estimate in August was about $600 million in addition to what we had last year in revenue growth. So there's still a lot of opportunities for budget increases for the state. What you're starting to see in the trend is the state is dependent on oil production, and most of what we're seeing as that positive revenue trend is an increase in oil production. It's not tapering, but it's starting to level off some, so it's not as steep of an increase as it has been in the past. But it's still a good forecast for the legislature. We're going to get to specific legislation to watch on these further slides and some highlights we think are going to be a major impact for the city. As we've done in the past and as we saw also during the interim and in the last legislation, role of counselors and staff during the session. As you may have experienced last year, there's a couple of times that I think the council and staff is planning to come to Santa Fe for the session, not in conjunction with or around Las Cruces days in Santa Fe. And then there's also other opportunities if you're up there on specific pieces of legislation that you want to advocate for. And even if you're not there now, following COVID, they're still allowing for virtual participation in a lot of the committees. So as issues come up, I notify staff, and the staff can notify you about if there's issues you have particular interest. And as some of you experienced last year, if you're in Santa Fe and there's issues you want to work on or you want to connect with legislators, we're happy to walk you around and help navigate that crazy place so we can at least find those legislators for you. And then staff is the same. So we set up a communication. I guess I would call it a tree as far as what we're dealing with issues. Funnel those issues down to staff, get input, and then we're able to advocate for the city's interests during the session. So again, look forward to you. And if you have a chance to make it to Santa Fe or you have an interest in a particular issue, as you probably heard me say before, it makes a difference if you go to Santa Fe and see the legislators there. They appreciate the phone calls and texts, especially when they know you've made a four-hour trip just to talk to them about an issue. It does make an impact, and they do pay attention. And they also like to hear from other elected officials versus hearing just from staff or from lobbyists. So if there's an opportunity or there's something you would like to have connection with up there, we're happy to help you make that connection with the legislators. Here's just a breakdown of the timeline. Session always starts the third Tuesday in January, and so this year, it's about the latest it can start, so it's January 21st. They've allowed pre-filing of legislation for legislators, although they've cut down the time. They used to give them about a month, now it's only about two weeks. So starting just after, on January 1st, we'll start to see the first of the pre-filled legislation. You don't have to pre-file legislation to introduce it during the session, but it gives them an early start to try and get early bill numbers. Some legislators like to have low bill numbers. Halfway through the session is the deadline for bill introduction. So on the 30th day or February 20th, that's the last day legislators can introduce substantive bills, except it's also not the exact last day because they'll introduce what's called dummy bills. So they'll have about 100 bills that only have a title and have no substance that they can substitute later in the session for substantive legislation, and they'll introduce all those bills on that last day. But by about the midpoint, we'll have a good idea of what we're looking at and what the scope of what policy issues we will see. March 22nd is the end of the legislative session. I always say the only things I can tell you for sure about a legislative session in this in 2025, it will for sure start at noon on January 21st, and it will for sure end at noon on March 22nd, give or take a few minutes, but other than that, everything else is pretty much still the Wild West. The governor has 20 days to act on legislation following the session. If the governor fails to act on a piece of legislation by that date of April 11th this year, it's deemed to be pocket vetoed. So the governor has to actually take action to sign or veto legislation. And the governor also has the authority to use line item veto on appropriations bills. And so some of those bills, like capital outlay, like the budget, the governor has the authority to line item veto. And if a piece of legislation does not have an effective date specified in it, June 20th will be the effective date of all new legislation. And now for IPR changes, I think I'm turning it over to Christine, and I'll be back.
Mayor Protem, City Council. Christine Rivera, City Clerk. I want to bring forward some proposed IPR changes, but before I get into that, I want to kind of go over some current data that we're seeing at the city. So as of October 31st of this year, we've had 2,588 requests. In 2023, we had 1,864 requests. So we've seen an increase, an exponential increase. We feel that we're going to probably meet 3,000 by the end of the year. We've seen since 2018, we had 810 requests, so you can kind of see the difference. We've had a 130% rate growth in the number of requests that we've obtained. We've also realized that we're spending anywhere from 400 to 500 hours a month reviewing, redacting, and researching IPR requests. So just throwing that data out there as I go into these changes, in 2023, we did see some major changes to IPR that we were so excited about. But generally, IPR is very vague and very ambiguous, and it's definitely interpreted differently by different attorneys and different judges. So you can kind of see where we start running into some of the problems that we do. But in 2023, there were some changes, and I'm going to go over a couple of those. The first one was a really awesome change, which was body cam specificity. So we were getting requests for any and all body cam for this event. Well, now they're required to put in more specifics related to it. So they have to give us a computer-aided dispatch record number or a police report number or a date or date range with reasonable specificity with one of the following: the name of the law enforcement officer or first responder, an approximate time or an approximate location, and then any other criteria established by law enforcement. Usually, we're looking for dates of birth because that's how they look it up in PD. The next couple of changes that we saw were actually very surprising because a lot of people don't know that we couldn't redact these things beforehand, and now we can. So one of the things that we weren't able to redact beforehand was great bodily harm, images of deceased and intimate body parts. Now we're able to do that. We're also able to redact death notification. So if a police officer goes out to a family member to notify them of a death, we are now able to redact that. We're also able to redact passwords, which surprisingly was not a redaction or an exemption that we could provide, so now we're able to do that. And lastly, employee addresses. Those were public record up until 2023. Of course, that doesn't account for elected officials. Your addresses don't fall into that exemption. So the two main changes that I am proposing are related to what we call as otherwise provided by law. And this is a really, really difficult exemption for us to apply because there are numerous laws. And so the first one is related to victims' rights. And the reason why we're bringing this up is because victims' rights protects the victims, but only their names, so it doesn't protect their visual depiction. So if somebody is the victim of an assault, we can't redact their face. We can only redact their name. So and then the thing with that is that we can only redact up until the case is adjudicated. So what happens is then those protections fall away from the victim. And so a lot of times, my team feels that we're protecting the accused a lot more than we're protecting the victims, and we see that as a major problem. So we would like to see that those protections extend past the adjudication of cases. Next is the Children's Code, which is another very, very difficult exemption for us to apply. So the Children's Code limits the protections to children whose records are related only to CYFD, which means child abuse and neglect. So what we're proposing is that there be greater protections. We increase those protections to children that are involved in any sort of crime. So those are the main ones that are related a lot to what PD does. The next one is email searches, and you guys have all seen this when I've requested IPR requests from you guys, but we get these really, really broad and burdensome requests where they're requesting any and all emails from the city manager for the past three years. That takes us a lot of time. We do try to work with the constituents and ask, can you be a little more specific? Or can you narrow down the timeframe? Can you give us some keywords? You know, help us help you. That doesn't always happen, and so we get these enormous email files that we have to go through. So what I'm asking for is for some more specificity related to email searches, kind of similar to what we have for the body cam footage. Fees. This has been an ongoing conversation, I know, at the Municipal League and at the legislature. We don't have a fee schedule. We don't have a set fee schedule. Right now, what we are charging is for a jump drive, to put information on a jump drive, or if we're printing copies of a document for them. Everything that we do is electronic, for the most part, and free. And so we're asking for there to be a change regarding to some kind of set fee schedule across the state, so municipalities don't have to determine that themselves. Also, what's happening is that we're putting a lot of hours and a lot of work into these requests, and people are then saying, oh, never mind, we don't want that. So I think if we have a set fee schedule, that'll help with that. And then lastly, I didn't put this on here, so it's just kind of something to think about in the future, but we have a lot of people requesting body cam footage that are using it on their YouTube channels. And they're currently not paying for those videos because they're electronic, so they get a link for them. Well, in return, by putting it on YouTube, they're probably monetizing off of that. And so what we would like to see is our name, image, and likeness protected at some point, and maybe some sort of trademarking or profit-sharing video related to that. So those are all my proposed changes, and I believe I'll turn it over to Natalie.
Natalie Green, again, for the record. We are monitoring some of the policies around housing this session. The first is we anticipate that there'll be a third rendition of the New Mexico Office of Housing, so we're monitoring that bill. If it has substantial changes from last year's, and I anticipate that staff would be supportive of seeing that move forward, what it does is it codifies the Office of Housing. It exists now, but it only exists under this current governor, so this would extend it past whoever's in office. We would also like to see additional investment in the New Mexico Housing Trust Fund. Last year was one of the largest investments to date, so we want to see that commitment move forward. We would also like to see an increase in investment in both rapid rehousing vouchers and permanent supportive housing to address increases in homelessness. Typically, that's through the Linkages Program, but there are other programs out there. We would also like to support eviction prevention funding, so if we can keep people from becoming homeless in the first place and can address their risk for housing insecurity early and often, then we can prevent homelessness. We'd also like to support flexible funding for supportive services and housing. Oftentimes, supportive services are linked to very stringent and heavily regulated federal funds, so we want to see broader use and broader flexibility in those. And then we're also monitoring the potential for a statewide source of income discrimination. Source of income discrimination legislation has passed in the major metros, including Las Cruces, Bernalillo County, Albuquerque, and Santa Fe, and so we anticipate that there will be advocates who bring that forward for a statewide. So we'll continue to monitor that as well.
Again, Larry Haran, lobbyist for the City of Las Cruces. Just before I get into anti-donation and enabling legislation, just a couple of other things that's come up on the Inspection of Public Records Act in the last couple of weeks with meetings in the Municipal League. Municipal League has met with New Mexico Foundation for Open Government and also the New Mexico Press Association to see if they can collaborate on changes to IPR, because one of the big challenges you have is a fight between local governments and open government advocates. And so the effort is going to be to try and see if there's common ground we can come to agreement on. And there's a couple of areas that seem hopeful on that. Part of what, and Christine touched on it about the fees, what you have in addition to YouTube is you have companies like LexisNexis calling, asking for big information requests from local governments, both cities and counties, and that's data that they're taking, commercializing and monetizing. So there may be some type of a bifurcation of fees, meaning for the press and for citizens, we're trying to maintain the intent of IPR, have a fee structure so that they can get the information they need. But if it's a commercialization purpose, either treating them differently in another statute or charging them in a different fashion in order to try and eliminate some of that overuse, some would call it abuse, but excessive use of IPR. And the other piece that they're talking about, and it'll probably come up, we're going to have a follow-up meeting probably within the next two weeks with FOG, is an administrative review piece in between the requister and the local government and the district court. So if you can adjudicate or have an administrative process, that you have a dispute, that you can resolve it more quickly to determine what people are looking for, so we're not waiting for a court to weigh in. They're talking about putting in an additional step to try and streamline some of the process as it relates to IPR. So just another couple of pieces to consider. So now we're on to the anti-donation and enabling legislation. We talked about it last time I was in front of you. In the last 60-day legislative session, there was an exemption to the anti-donation clause that was proposed and passed as a constitutional amendment in the last general election. That would allow for the legislature to pass legislation to allow local governments in the state to give money to private individuals if it's for what they consider to be essential household services. So the step we have to have now with the constitutional amendment is now we have to go back to the legislature and ask them to pass that enabling legislation. That's what we've discussed and what we're proposing. Senator Hamblin has authorized the draft of that legislation, and essentially what it would do, the idea first came up with us with septic systems, but it's probably going to be broader than that. We would ask the legislature to allow for local governments to develop their own program to fund projects that could actually be on private property for citizens as it relates to any utilities. So for us with the septic systems, where we run into the problem is we can lay the sewer line, you can run the sewer line all the way to the property line, you cannot go any further to make that connection to the homeowner. So this would allow the local government to have the authority to decide what the program looks like. So in this hypothetical, it would be you would be able to create a program to say, we're going to provide funding on whatever criteria you establish is fair for those residents to provide that last connection to the septic system. Or if you had other utilities where you wanted, where you needed it or felt like it was necessary to go to that house on private property, you would have the authority to do that. So you would be able to spend either your general fund dollars, state dollars, or other dollars, whereas today you can't on private property. And so that's what the concept is with the legislation. It's currently being drafted by Legislative Council Service. Senator Hamblin has offered to carry the legislation during the session. This will be the first bill where we've tried to use this new constitutional amendment, so it looks like hopefully we'll be trailblazers. And at this point, it's going to be broad for all utilities and possibly broadband. We're not sure whether broadband is going to be included or not, but the idea that the senator proposed was she wanted it broad enough so that we don't have to keep going back to the legislature. And that's one of the things that was part of the discussion we had is if you're going to create a program like this, where you have to have enabling legislation, if you limit it to just one or two things, and you think, oh, we should have used it for water or we should have used it for electric, you would have to go back to the legislature. So this would be a broad scope, spectrum. So this would be a broad scope, spectrum of enabling legislation that we're proposing. And that's one of the proactive pieces of legislation that we'll be pursuing this session. Public safety is not a surprise. We've been talking about it. There's been at least two committee hearings in Las Cruces, and the chief story has participated, actually, Las Cruces and Santa Fe, and then we had a special session on public safety legislation. So what we saw in the special session, what we'll see again in the 60-day, is legislation related to mental competency, pre-trial detention, also criminal competency, felon possession, juvenile justice reform. The DA Sam Bregman from the Second Judicial District's presenting his legislative priorities today to the Courts and Corrections Committee in Santa Fe. Part of that is going to be proposed changes to the Children's Code as it relates particularly to juvenile gun violence, and so we'll see some of those legislation related to that. And then there's still some ongoing tension between the legislature and the governor over the special session agenda that the governor proposed. Just today, in the Albuquerque Journal, the Senate Democrats have indicated that they are going to have a package of criminal justice reform legislation to include a behavioral health trust fund, to provide funding for behavioral health positions throughout the state, some form of firearm safety, and also, again, a common theme, dealing with criminal competency, because Chief Story did a good job of illustrating that impact in Las Cruces. That's starting to gain some traction, you're starting to see news stories in the Albuquerque area where you have particular individuals that were having the same issue, that they have multiple arrests and charges, but those charges are dropped because they can, they're not competent to stand trial. So we'll see a lot on, as it relates to criminal justice reform. The next piece, and we've been asked to present on, is Animal Protection Voters is going to propose an animal welfare trust fund. We have a couple individuals here, Stacy Kirby and Judy Wolf from Animal Protection, in case you have questions for specifics on this piece of legislation. This is with a $30 million one-time appropriation to create a trust fund to allow for grant funding for any animal shelters throughout the state. So for us, if that's enacted, then we would be eligible, since we have an animal shelter, to apply for funding for operations of the animal shelter. And they've also asked for support of that legislative effort. And I think, and I'll look to them for confirmation, I think it was proposed last year, the second time. So this is the second time we've seen it. They proposed it last session, it did not pass in the 30-day session. And then we get to questions, if you have questions for them, they're available. And they traveled down just to get to present that in front of you today. Other policy items, paid family medical leave, that's the program proposed the past few sessions that would grant paid leave for employees for qualifying illnesses of themselves or their family members. Last year, there were two competing proposals. One was for a six-week paid leave program that was funded through, like, an insurance program, like an Aflac-type of program, and the other was for a total of 12 weeks of paid family medical leave that was funded by the employers and employees and run by the state. Those were the two competing pieces of legislation. They had a vote on the 12-week program, it got out of the Senate, made it all the way to the House floor, and it failed by one vote. So many of the legislators that were in the House that voted against paid family medical leave either didn't run again or lost in the primary. And so I bring it up, it's going to be back, it'll be back this session, if it doesn't pass, this session, it's gonna be back in the next session. Some type of paid family leave is going to be introduced and will pass the legislature. If it's not this year, it's coming, and so that has an impact on anybody who's an employer, including municipal government, as it would apply. So just to have that on your radar, that's something that's gonna be coming back. We don't know the format of the legislation yet, it has not been, a draft has not been introduced from either of the, compared to what we had last year. Looking at what happened with the makeup of the legislature, I would anticipate it's probably gonna be the 12-week program that looks more like employer-employee-funded and run by the state of New Mexico. Local Solar Access Fund was something that Representative Rena Sapansky introduced from Santa Fe last year, and with support of the New Mexico Municipal League. It was a grant program, I think the ask was for $100 million for grants for local governments to be able to apply for and obtain funding to do things like add solar to municipal buildings or municipal facilities. So it was a positive program to allow for funding for increase of solar throughout the state. Every 60-day session, there's a cleanup tax bill. This year, I think it's 342 pages, various issues within the tax code. I was very excited to see that in the cleanup tax bill, as you look at the next bullet is the MRA statute, they're already proposing a change to the MRA statute that we just fixed last year as far as timing. And there's also changes as it relates to tax increment development districts, and how they determination, how they determine the baseline gross receipts tax in those TIDS, and so it's something for us to be aware of, although our TID is already established and the baseline is established. As we're dealing with TIDS in the future, it would change how that baseline gross receipts tax is determined, although it shouldn't be too unfamiliar to you, because what they did is they modeled it what we did in the Metropolitan Redevelopment Act statute last year. So it's something that you'll probably be familiar with, because they're gonna do the same, the same thing to determine a baseline. You have to establish the boundaries of a district, they'll sign it a tax code, they'll take, collect a year's worth of data for that district, and then that will become your baseline gross receipts tax. So they're gonna use the same methodology that we used when we made the changes to MRA last year. MRA statute, we don't know for sure, but the City of Albuquerque may propose another change to the MRA statute, which would be the third year in a row. They contacted me about it a couple months ago. They're talking about re, the original MRA statute allowed for use of eminent domain within the areas of the MRA. City of Albuquerque's interested in putting that back in the legislature, in the statute. Eminent domain is one of the hardest things, if not impossible, things to pass at the legislature. They hate the concept of expansion of eminent domain, so don't know if that's gonna happen, but it's possible, so we'll keep an eye out for it and make sure it doesn't, whatever they propose doesn't have an impact on the work we're trying to do with our metropolitan redevelopment areas. And then we know specifically that there's gonna be two different proposals for an increase in alcohol tax. One is proposed by Representative Ferrari and Senator Sadiel Lopez from Albuquerque. That's an increase, and it's based upon the wholesale and the volume of alcohol sales. Of note, they, it also creates a fund for some of the revenue from the increased tax to go to treatment services, which includes a provision for local governments where we would have availability of fund or revenue to fund alcohol treatment. And then also, the second one is Representative Michaela Cadena from, also from down here, and Representative Potahone from Albuquerque. That's a use tax, theirs is completely different. They want to tax alcohol at point of sale, much like a gross receipts tax or the tax on cannabis, where instead of collecting at a wholesale level, it would be at the point of sale, a 3% taxing, tax on alcohol sales. That also has a provision to create a program to dedicate some of the funding to treatment programs, which also has a provision for local governments and others available for that funding. Just one of the things, before we get too excited about potential new revenue, the appropriators, the Finance Committee and the House Appropriations Committee do not like earmarks of programs, so it's not unusual for us to see a proposed dedication of tax revenue get stripped from a piece of legislation like that, because they'd rather allocate it from year to year and maintain that appropriating authority. And I think, now we get to questions. So happy to answer questions on any of that or anything else you might want to hear about.
Amazing. Thank you to the four of you. Okay, yes, Counselor Flores.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Thank you, Larry, Mr. Haran. What, I, you know, last year, this tax on alcohol, you know, we visited with legislators, and I'm still not clear on the difference. Like, you know, it seems like the one that Michaela Cadena is behind actually addresses lowering the price of liquor. Was that, I mean, that's what she said. Was that in the bill? You lower the price of liquor, the tax goes down, but I'm not referring to the tax. I just want to know whether that's how that bill was proposed, you know?
Mayor Protim and Counselor Flores, I'm not sure as far as how it ended up last year, but the one that she has proposed and presented on this year would be an increase from 2% to 3%, so it would be a 1% increase, and it would be on per drink, and the other, the difference-
And it would be on what?
Per drink. So if you went in and you ordered, you bought an alcoholic beverage, it'd be on the actual sales, so it's like a sales tax. Currently, and the alternative proposal is taxation at a wholesale level. So right now, they tax on volume at the wholesale level, and the proposal with Representative Ferrari and Senator Sadiel Lopez would increase that and create a tiered structure. So like smaller, like craft brews and craft wineries, craft facilities would pay a rate based on volume they're selling, but if you had an Anheuser-Busch that's at a higher volume, they would pay a higher tax rate. So it was a, it's a three-tier structure, and it also included an additional fee of a 28 cents, and I would need to confirm on the volume or what the 20, or if it's on per drink, that they create a fee to pump into that fund. So that has several moving pieces, but it's a wholesale tax versus a use tax or more like a sales tax.
From the customer, the consumer.
Correct. And one of the potential issues is, if it's a use tax, every time you have a point of sale, that's the taxable incident, so you have thousands of taxpayers. At a wholesale level, there's many less wholesalers, a dozen, 18, something like that, so it's easier to track and collect at a wholesale level. So that'll be something they'll have to decide what they want to do.
Or maybe the, it'll go to a vote. I also have a question about the MRA and what Albuquerque wants to do. They want to have an eminent domain on the district?
Mayor Protim and Counselor, that's correct. They want to have the authority to utilize eminent domain within the boundaries of the district.
Hmm, and what's the justification or the rationale for that, do you know?
Mayor Protim and Counselor, I wouldn't, I'll speculate, I can't tell you with certainty, but they did have a proposal for a property tax on vacant commercial buildings in downtown Albuquerque that didn't pass. So an educated guess would be, if you have property owners that you're not able to get to comply on certain things, that would give them the authority to utilize eminent domain if necessary. I'm not sure that that's their, that's their reasoning, but that, it seems to make sense based on the ordinance they proposed.
Okay. And then I have a question about the anti-donation and septic tanks, septic systems is the word that was on the monitor here. So what exactly does that mean, and how would it be implemented, do you know? The implementation part.
Mayor Protim and Counselor, actually, the actual implementation, the way, at least in concept, we have it, are proposing it is, you give broad authority at the state level saying local governments can create a program to fund utilities to private property owners, essentially based, almost like what you'd see in the Local Economic Development Act. That would give you, as the city council, the authority to create the criteria for the actual program. So you could have criteria for who it's available for, funding sources, if it's an application process, a grading process, it would allow you to have that authority to create the program that fits best the needs of your community.
Now, but that doesn't include the hookup, is that correct?
Mayor Protim and Counselor, it would, you would have the ability to cook up, it would be that, it would be on private property, so that's the difference, that's the change. You could use public dollars on private property if we're successful in passing the bill. Constitutionally, you can do that now, we just don't have the enabling legislation to say, go ahead and do it.
What enabling legislation would you need, other than, would, the legislation would just reiterate the law or the, whatever the state wants, has approved?
Mayor Protim and Counselor Flores, the way the constitutional amendment reads, it says you can utilize public funding for essential household services if the legislature passes enabling legislation? So that's the next step, that's why we have to pass a bill.
Right, 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 because it's a constitutional issue.
Correct.
And then, but how, well, I mean, you don't have a crystal ball, but you definitely know a lot of people in municipalities and legislators. How feasible is that going to be? I mean, I think a lot of people will argue that it's, you know, it falls under the purview of the anti-donation clause, but I've advocated against that rationale because it's a health and safety issue, and all citizens, everyone, I mean, those septic tanks are going to deteriorate, and it's overwhelmingly expensive to remove the septic tank, to only have a septic tank removed, and then, you know, the resident has to, or the owner of the, of the structure, then has to pay for the hookup. And then, but I think, and then what about the lines that go up along the property lines? I mean, would all of that be included?
Mayor Protim and Counselor Flores, yes, if we're able to pass the enabling legislation, because this creates a new exemption to the anti-donation clause. It's bad luck to say anything will be not, anything less than difficult to pass at the legislature, but the septic system problem here is an example that we used in testimony when they were advocating for the constitutional amendment, so I don't think they'll be surprised to hear about the problem, and as of now, we haven't heard of any opposition to the concept of us allowing for utilities to be an exception to anti-donation clause.
And then how is the money going to be dispersed among the, you know, all of the municipalities in the state of New Mexico? I imagine a lot of cities still rely on the septic tanks. So is there gonna be a huge allocation, like millions upon millions of dollars? Is there an allocation clause in that?
Mayor Protim and Counselor Flores, no, this bill wouldn't have any funding attached to it, but what it would do is it would allow local governments to utilize whatever type of funding, whether it's grants, whether it's federal money, whether it's local general fund, and also, in concept, we're allowing to bond against it, so if you had an ability to bond and you wanted to create a fund, so every potential, we're trying to make it as flexible as we can, so that way you have as much flexibility to obtain funding for it.
Right. Well, great. Thank you so much, Mr. Haran. Thank you.
Counselor Graham.
Thank you so much. Just a quick question, and I'm thinking we'll probably invite our friends up for the Animal Welfare Trust bill. I believe you said HB 191. I think that's what I heard from coming on up.
Thank you, Counselor. Stacy Sutton Kirby with the, with Animal Protection Voters. Yes, it was House Bill 191.
Okay, and I just grabbed the draft from the, from the earlier, the session earlier this year. Are you looking at pretty similar language, kind of just reintroducing?
Very similar language, although there has been some discussion around which would be the agency or board or commission that would disperse the grant money. In the, in the draft from last session, it was Department of Finance, but going forward, we're looking at some possible other entities. That's with input from the author as well as legislative counsel on what would make the most sense for dispersing the grant money.
Okay, thank you. And anyone interested in this, I would definitely recommend looking over this, because, you know, extra funding for shelters is good enough, but this actually has really broad reach into empowering, you know, better mitigating threats to public safety, reports of animal cruelty, so it goes far beyond what even I would just think of as a, you know, typical shelter support, so.
Mayor Protim and Counselor, I would agree with your reading of the last draft from 2024, that the intent of the legislation is to be able to build out capacity, not only by doing things such as making money available for construction projects, renovations, purchasing equipment, but also empowering the shelters and the nonprofit partners that they work within their communities to do things like animal wellness, vaccination clinics, chipping, education, the kinds of things that help keep pets, excuse me, companion animals in their homes and keep them from coming into the shelter in the first place, as well as possibly providing funding for training for animal services and animal control officers, all that wraparound.
Wonderful.
Yeah.
All right, well, thank you so much, and thanks for making the drive.
Oh, absolutely, and I just want to say, you have such a wonderful community of constituents who showed up today in support of this, and that really cheered us when we arrived, because they're your folks.
They're raising the roof behind you.
Yeah, all your folks in blue back there, so hats off to Las Cruces, and thank you for having us.
Thank you so much. Thank you, Mary. Thank you, Mayor Protem.
Thank you, Counselor Graham. And thank you, I hope you happen to be here on a good day as our next item is also about, um, animal welfare. So I hope you stick around.
Well, that's what I heard, that y'all have been working really hard on your local ordinance. So go, Las Cruces.
Yeah, I hope you stick around. Thank you. Uh, yes, Counselor McClure.
I'm going to try not to get into the weeds and I'll just preface with numbers is not my strong suit. Was it about 30 million that our overall requests are?
Uh, thank you. Yes, Mayor Protem and Counselor McClure, we have 11 projects, $27 million potentially, although, as I mentioned, some of them are still being, uh, developed.
Nice. I actually wrote down 27, but I was just giving it a wider. Okay, cool. So typically, do we do, uh, do we expect a third to come through? Is that kind of what we hope for?
You know, I, I mentioned, that was a big sigh, Larry, behind me. Sorry. I mentioned that the last two years have been, uh, we've received about the same amount, just under $12 million. The asks between those two years varied widely, though. So we sort of came in at that same dollar amount, but with very different total asks. So I couldn't really, um, speak to a trend, and I don't know if you could, Larry.
Thank you, Barbara. Um, Mayor Protem, Counselor McClure, it really depends. And, and one of the things it depends on is whether or not we get any of the statewide funding through the governor's request. So, um, and I don't, I'm not going to remember the year, but Governor Martinez had Year of the Water. And we got a lot that year because we had a lot of projects that fit that. And so part of the artsy-science of it is, is trying to predict what that priority is going to be, both for legislators and for the governor, to try and tap into all that available funding. And so that's why we, that's really what, when we're trying to come up with projects, is to try and hit the trend from legislators, what they like, what the governor is indicating, which can also change in the middle of the session, what the governor wants to fund. So we try and hit those, the highlights. So that's why it's really hard to say.
I see the tap in there. I appreciate that. But I was also curious, too, how do you kind of make this, the strategy? Because for, for one hand, sort of the septic thing with requests is 1.6. With things being more expensive, why aren't our asks more for some of these things?
Mayor Protem and Counselor, the dollar amounts that the legislators have to fund, even if their, if their available funding is higher, the requests go up proportionally. So typically, if they have, last year, a Senate member had about $4 million. They're going to get probably 100 million in requests, um, maybe 50 million. And so is a House member. So even if their number goes up, everybody's ask goes up. So, so even though the, the dollar amounts go up, it, it's really difficult to move the needle much for them because they're trying, everyone's competing for the same
And I, I would also, oh, sorry.
No, go ahead.
Uh, Mayor Protem and Counselor McClure, I would, I would add that, um, you know, last year we did an analysis of all of our own legislators' expenditures or allocations of capital outlay. And Larry's absolutely right. You know, when you look at the districts that they are serving, they are, they're looking at a wide geographical area and, you know, many different kinds of needs in the, the districts. And so, yes, we are, we are competing with many other communities and local governments. And I definitely saw, especially from the last session, just because we would ask for more money, doesn't mean we're necessarily getting it because of that, uh, distribution of assets or, or requests from the other communities as well.
I was going to ask if that's a sort of strategy thing to say, we're going to be doing much more regional, say with the Library of Bookmobile, we're hitting a lot more people. That might be something that they would look to more kindly.
Um, absolutely. Um, Mayor Protem and Counselor McClure, and that is, that's some of the feedback we received directly from the legislators. They are looking for regional, um, projects to, to support. As you know, they've been very supportive of our Community of Hope. Um, we, we looked at some of our own asks, for example, with the library that I mentioned, that is a regional resource for our community. Some of the, uh, the, um, police response vehicle request also serves the larger region. Uh, what we heard from the legislators is, yes, they want to fund things in their districts, but they want also things that have a regional impact. So that, that certainly was part of the consideration for developing the proposed priorities that we brought forward today.
Okay, last question. Maybe this is not a great term, but can we double dip? So if you have, like, the governor supports something and, and gives funding, can Grow Money then support that in the same way, too? Could the legislator then work together with, across, and put that together, I guess?
So the, the types of, yes, Mayor Protem and Counselor McClure, um, we could potentially, as you said, double dip. For example, last year, um, for the, our Amador, um, crossing project, we got funds both from the governor and for the legislators for that. The Grow Money is a little bit different in that the, typically what we're talking about is capital outlay. So we're looking at larger capital projects. The Grow Funds can, can fund, um, now especially, studies or, uh, smaller equipment. It may not be capital, but it could certainly be complementary. And one thing that we're considering, for example, and, and Larry recommended we add to the Grow list, it was that, for example, the, uh, police drone program that's complementary to the capital outlay that we are requesting for the real-time crime center that includes drone pods on, on facilities in order to, uh, to make that program, uh, work better. So yes, we do, we do try to look for some complementary programs along with the capital outlay requests.
Okay, thank you. That's it. That's all I had.
Thank you, Counselor McClure. Counselor Matisse, did you have a question?
Who's answered?
Okay, great. I have some questions and then I'll get back to you, Counselor Flores. Um, again, thanks to the three of you. Barbara, since you're here, I'll just start from the beginning. Just one quick thing around the active transportation plan. Are you able to get us some of the projects that have been funded with those allocations from the past? I think that makes us better advocates when we go up there to talk about, this is the impact you've had already and this is what can continue to happen. I'm, I'm familiar with those projects.
Um, Mayor Protem, that is such a great request and question because that is something that we've been working towards. And when, some of the feedback we rega, we got from the legislators this year is they would like to have an annual report. And so what we are working towards is a December report so that we can look at the funds that were previously received and get some, some more detail, um, about how those funds were used and what the community impact was for that fun, funding. And that way you all will be able to have that as well, to speak to that when you advocate for, especially ongoing, um, projects. So does that answer your question?
Yes, absolutely, Barbara. Thank you so much. And then on, on some of the projects, I caught that, I think there was just two projects. I didn't write the other one, but I know one of them for sure was the Real-Time Crime Center, which, um, you had that, the only funding source left to cover would have been about, um, 800,000. And so I'm wondering why we don't just include that in the ask, especially since the governor has made public safety a priority.
Yes, thank you, Mayor Protem. And you know, um, what we brought forward for you today is definitely still in development. We want to provide an idea of the scope of the project, the dollars, and we can certainly make adjustments going forward and certainly with your guidance. What we really want to do today is just find out, are we on the right track with the kinds of, of projects that we're proposing for capital outlay? Because what we need to do is now turn it around into a resolution for you all, uh, to consider at your December 2nd meeting. We use that resolution so that we can then, um, uh, provide the state through their portal with our list of, of projects and the, the capital outlay requests. So we can absolutely make adjustments to those requests. And, and, and this go around, as we've been developing these numbers for you, we're sort of, it's sort of coming to light for us as well, where we have big gaps, where we have small gaps, and we can certainly make adjustments to that requested amount.
Yeah, great. I can't remember the other one, but it had like 0.6 remaining. But since this one is on a priority list, I think it would just be good to try to get it all funded. So I think that'd be great.
Thank you.
Larry, I think this one's for you, since we're talking about these priorities. Since 2018, with this current administration, Las Cruces has not fared well, uh, when it comes to the governor's portal. What suggestions do you have that we can break through, um, with some of these requests?
Mayor Protem, it's what we're doing, which is, and it's where we were successful last year. If I remember right, we got money for a real-time crime center and Amador Crossing from the governor. So we've-
For the first time.
For the, and so we figured out what the priority was going to be and we had projects ready for that. Not only we do that, we had good advocacy from mayor, council, and staff for those projects during the session. So it was kind of the, kind of the, you know, we hit all three of the, of the high points. That's what, that's what you have. The trick is hitting the right projects for the right priorities. Like, like streetlights and lighting is on here because during the Public Safety Summit, the governor talked about lighting in communities. Um, real-time crime center's back. Um, you see water back. That's because that's what we're trying to do. And, and the fact, and when, coming up, meeting with the governor's staff a couple sessions ago, meeting with the governor, it all makes a difference. And the advocacy has been much more active the past several years. Um, with council and staff, it's been very good, and I think that's why we've been successful. So I think that's what we just need to, we need to keep hitting on. And, and when you all came to Santa Fe, the messaging was good and the meetings were very good. And so I think that's what we just need to continue.
Okay. Thank you, Larry. I, I appreciate that affirmation. I think you're right that we are on the, on the right track. And then just so I'm clear, on the IPRA updates, um, for either of you, honestly, I think I just really, I, I know that historically it's been really difficult to advocate for IPRA because it's almost, almost automatically feels like, what are you trying to hide? Though what you presented here today, Christine, was really reasonable in terms of the, the heaviness that, that IPRA has. And so you're, Larry, you mentioned that this is an initiative being undertaken by other city clerks, the municipal league, and then you even said, um, the press corps?
Mayor Protem, Municipal League has met both with New Mexico Foundation for Open Government and the New Mexico Press Association. And I'll, and to answer your question, the difference is I think, and, and I had a good discussion with AJ Forty, who's the executive director of Municipal League, what they were trying to do is find common ground with the open government advocates, meaning IPRA being available for the public and for the press is, in their view, what the intent of IPRA was, not necessarily the monetization and commercialization of information. And so by finding common ground with them, they're much more likely to reach a compromise because that's usually where, where it becomes difficult is Fog, Foundation for Open Government in particular, are, are very zealous, uh, protectors of open records. And so finding common ground versus being adversarial to them, I think, is what, um, will be helpful.
Thank you, Larry. And then just lastly, I wanted to say big kudos on the anti-donation legislation. I, I was wondering how that was going to work, if we were going to go up there with the Las Cruces Pacific piece of legislation and how strange that would be. But this sort of broader legislation to allow other local governments, um, I think is important. If there's anything I can do in reaching out to other colleagues and other city councils, please let me know and that way we can advocate together. I think that would be really important. And then, um, just also thank you, Natalie, for the housing priorities, the initiatives that you mentioned. I think codifying some of those pieces is going to be really important. And I look forward to hearing from you again soon, Larry, on more of the, the specific pieces of legislation that are making their way through.
Thank you, Mayor Protem.
All right. Um, Counselor Flores, did you still have a question?
Yes, I always have questions. We can be here all day. But, um, so thank you, madam chair. And Larry, thank you again for, um, providing all this information for us. Um, so there's the rainy day fund, the general fund. How much money is in there? I know it's billions, but how many? I don't-
Mayor Protem and Counselor Flores, the general fund budget last year, and I'm trying to, it's somewhere between 10.6 and 11.1, but that was for outgoing expenses. What the legislature's done is there's several now permanent funds, early childhood education fund, the rainy day fund, which I forget the proper name, passed by Representative Larry Lornaga, that triggers once oil prices reach a certain level, has, I think, over $3 billion. There's different funds now because what they've done to protect those revenues we've gotten in the last couple of years is they've created a lot of pockets like that. So they're, they're putting money away for future downturns. So there's not just one rainy day fund anymore, there's a lot.
There's a lot. Are any of those funds being invested somewhere? I mean, where it could really grow and then we could have, have it dispersed to our rainy day people here in, here in the state of New Mexico?
Mayor Protem, Counselor, yes, they're all, they're all invested in one form or another, so they're generating revenue. For instance, the, the Severn Sachs Permanent Fund, where capital would come from if they didn't have cash, every year that we have capital outlay, it's based upon the return on that permanent fund and issuing on bonds as it relates to it. So that is typically the structure the legislature creates. It's invested and then they'll utilize some of the growth and the revenue from those funds. So the Animal Protection Fund, if it starts at 30 million, the idea being the 30 million corpus then grows, and so the available funding over the, in the out years becomes more for that, that dedicated purpose of the fund.
So is there any analysis as to what prospectively, uh, these funds could earn over a certain, and, you know, given all the ups and downs and all that sort of stuff of the market?
Mayor Protem, Counselor, there is, and that's provided through the Legislative Finance Committee. I don't know it off the top of my head, but their committee, um, and then, and their staff does the analysis on the budget. And then they also have a consensus revenue budget group, which, which is made up of Legislative Finance Committee, Taxation and Revenue Department, and Department of Finance Administration. And so they all collaborate also on not just budget projections, but also then they have knowledge of what, what the funds are doing, the projections for those funds.
Larry, in your estimation, and if you don't want to answer, don't, but, um, but I'm going to hold you to it now. Um, I, I just don't, maybe because I'm not a multi, I'm not even a multimillionaire, much less a multi-billionaire. But it just seems that there's just so, so much, there's billions of dollars and those billions of dollars must be generating more billions. So why, I know, uh, with all due respect to Senator, it's a good thing I don't remember her name, um, with all due respect, she said, no, we don't want to pierce that. We don't want to in any way, uh, you know, draw the money out. But it would be interesting to see what all the asks are of the legislature from the different municipalities and entities here in New Mexico, to see how much money would have to be dispersed to meet those asks and those needs more than asks. It's like, we're not asking for, you know, a multimillion-dollar movie theater or something like that. Has anybody ever done something like that? You know, a good mathematician or someone who really knows the market? Do you know?
Mayor Protem and Counselor, what, what has been happening in the past few sessions, especially since we've had this excess revenue, the Municipal League in particular has been working on those type of efforts. And also, um, also the administration. So roads, they've been funding a lot of road projects that have been unfunded in the past. A couple of years ago, we did airports. They're looking at water systems and water projects for local governments this year. What is that need and is there a mechanism for using some of these funds to fund those? To your overall question about the billions that are, that are socked away, what's still in the mind of some legislators, although there aren't as many left who remember it, but as recently as 2016, the state budget, um, there, they had a 0.5% reserve. And we had to cut Medicaid, K-12 education, they cut funding to local governments. So even though we are in a real high spot here, and even as recently as 2020, after COVID, the price of oil went to negative $50 a barrel. And so we see these giant swings. So they're reluctant to spend the cash. And that's why they've created a lot of these funds for the future. So that way, if we hit another downturn, they can fund both basic state government and continue to fund some of these, these capital priorities versus spending the cash and then not being able to fund the, you know, the essential functions that they see of state government. And there's been, since 2009, there's been three gigantic swings like that that we've endured. So there's a little bit of, of, of budget shortfall PTSD amongst legislators.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you, madam.
Any other questions? Great, thank you.
Thank you.
The four of you, I will do two minutes per person if there is public comment that folks want to make on this specific item. Um, actually, can you raise your hands if you, if anybody wants to speak about this? Wonderful. Okay. Oh. Come on up. Please don't forget to state your name.
I, Clint Backer, Executive Director, Animal Service Center, Mesia Valley. I just want to state that we are in favor of the Animal Welfare Trust Fund. Letter of recommendation or support was sent to them with our letterhead, so I just ask that the city do the same. Thank you.
Thank you, Clint. Oh, come on, come on up. Lorenzo.
Good afternoon, Lorenzo Alba, for the record. I just want to remind you that you kind of set precedence last year by showing up over there. So I hope that we see all of you over there again because it made a big impact in our community and how many millions of dollars we were able to bring in. If you don't show up and don't allow staff to show up, nothing happens. But y'all were there. Y'all showed up at the governor's, you showed up at the meetings, I saw you in the roundhouse. I saw a lot of you in the roundhouse and that made a huge impact on our community. I think that's how it should have been for a long time. But I think if all of you guys are there and allowing the administration to do their thing, pretty good at what they do. But also the department heads make a huge impact and actually getting the facts to the legislators and really making an impact on, showing them exactly what we're doing with the funding and how we're spending it. I intend to be there a lot. Hopefully I'll run into you guys and we'll be able to do this work together. But let's do it. Let's go get this, let's go get the money. Let's go get it. This community deserves it. What we're trying to do at the community, hope is huge. It's a lot bigger than all of us. It's not easy for everybody to understand what we're trying to accomplish there. Well, just come visit, come spend some time with us. Remember that it's not just our own house that we're serving there. We're serving low-income families there at Casa Pedegrinos. That's our largest demographic. And what we're doing now in that building should be evidence that we're actually doing the good things with the money. Now, 20% growth year over year on what we're doing, that's showing you that we can do something special with that money. So let's go do this together and I look forward to seeing all of you guys. And if you guys want to tag team a legislator with me, let me know. I'm really good at advocacy and God's given me that gift, so thank you so much.
Thanks, Lorenzo. Okay, no one else? We, okay, what, if you want to speak, why don't you go ahead and come on down and make a line in the little pathway here? Yeah, there we go.
I'm Stephen Jones. And I'd like to thank the council for entertaining funding for the library and library services. Believe that libraries bring communities together. And it's long overdue that, that we, that we address the library and library services. The bridge gaps between our differing communities and bring a critical resource to every person in Las Cruces, so thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Jones. Okay, that will be it. And thank you all so much again for that great presentation. And we will move on to 3.2, animal care and control ordinance. And Brad Douglas, our city attorney, will present.
All right. Thank you, Mayor Protem. Good afternoon, Mayor Protem and Council, Brad Douglas from the Legal Department. Now, some of you may be asking yourselves, why Brad? That's a pretty good question. So just to give a little background on this, this is something that a lot of our community advocates and partners have been asking be addressed for a couple of years now. And also, LCPD and Animal Control as well have been working together for some proposed revisions to Chapter 7 of our municipal code. And at some point, I was asked to come in and so I agreed and just very candidly looked at what was being proposed by some of our advocates and partners and what was being suggested by our internal staff through LCPD and Animal Control. And I think what I did is I made nobody happy because I went through their proposals and I said, no, you, you can't do that. Let's strike that. That's not constitutional. Let's, you know, let's add this. And so I view my role as to kind of take any proposed revisions and make them quote-unquote "legal" and also to bridge the gap between PD, I see Lieutenant Wiedler is here, she's been really instrumental throughout this process, along with Gino Jimenez, our Animal Control Supervisor. And so bridge the gap between the proposed revisions and, and our governing body, you all, to empower you all to just give feedback. That's, that's what I want this to be, is I want this to be more of a conversation between all of us. And so, without any further ado, let's get started. And so some, some key revisions that, that I've seen fit to address are regarding clarification of care and maintenance requirements for companion animals, what we think of as pets, but more comprehensive protections for those companion animals within the city of Las Cruces. There is a proposal, and I imagine this will probably get a lot of discussion, there's a proposal for mandatory spay and neuter requirements within the city. I know that some of you on the dais support that proposal and some of you, rightfully so, have some concerns about what that might mean for some of our human residents within the city of Las Cruces, particularly lower-income persons who would be subject to this if it were adopted by council. And so if the mandatory spay and neuter provision were to be adopted, there is a list of possible exemptions for qualifying companion animals. For example, if there is a, an animal, a companion animal that would otherwise be subjected to mandatory spay and neuter, if the owner or caretaker of that animal has a note from a licensed veterinarian saying, no, spaying or neutering this animal would be dangerous to the animal's overall health and well-being, well, then that companion animal could qualify for an exemption. Likewise, if it is a police service animal, it would be qualified for an exemption. If it's training to become a, oh, I'm going to get this term wrong, but to train or to maintain livestock, a companion animal like that, livestock dog, guard dog, thank you, Councilor Graham, then it would be potentially qualified for an exemption if it's, well, I'll stop there, but there, there are a number of potential exemptions if council wanted to pursue those. Another thing that, that we looked at, and this, this goes to just overall animal health, well-being, and safety within the city, is whether or not there should be restrictions on tethering a companion animal, with the possibility of eliminating the practice altogether if that's council's will. And so what is animal tethering? Well, it's just what it sounds like. Companion animal being tethered to either a stationary object or, or through use of a trolley system. And so I know that this is something that Lieutenant Wiedler cares deeply about and I'm going to rely on my, my subject matter experts over here. But studies do show that if, if an animal is tethered for long periods of time, many times those, those companion animals, they become aggressive. It's not good for their overall health and well-being. And also, there have sadly been times, and I've talked to Gino and Lieutenant Wiedler about this, where it's a, it's a strangulation threat. And so some of those, some of those animals die that way. And so that's for your consideration, whether we might want to eliminate that practice altogether or place restrictions and limitations on the practice. I think I'm down to number five. Point number five, we've tried to include more comprehensive prohibitions on abuse, neglect, and abandonment within the city. And I think that we've been successful at doing that, at least within our draft. Number six, something that we looked at, the practice of devocalization of a companion animal. Under the current draft, that would be rendered illegal and punishable by law. The research that, that we've done shows that there really is no legitimate reason to devocalize your animal. And so that would be eliminated under the proposed current draft. Declawing of certain companion animals, of course, one thinks of cats, would be much more limited. For example, if there is a letter or a note from a licensed veterinarian stating that the procedure would be appropriate, if the procedure would promote the general health and well-being of the animal for some therapeutic purpose, well, then it might be allowed under the proposed draft. But simply declawing your companion animal because you don't want to get scratched, that would not be allowed under the proposed revisions. Mayor Protem, I managed to sneak in the word "robust" into the next point. She always tells me that I use that word too much and of course, she's right. So more robust enforcement of prohibition of animal fighting and possession of paraphernalia related to animal fighting would be included. Number nine is, is significant because it's being proposed that irresponsible pet owners convicted two or more times, or actually, that should say more than two times, violating this chapter in a calendar year may be prohibited from pet ownership for a prescribed time Another potential key revision is if mandatory spay and neuter is ordained, residents may apply for intact animal permits pursuant to qualifying criteria. And we talked about some of those possible exceptions earlier. I do think it's important to note that if an intact animal permit is issued, that animal would also be subject to the microchip requirement. The thought crossed my mind, and the reason I bring that up is the thought crossed my mind the other day, well, what if an intact animal somehow finds its way to the ASCMV and, and there is an exemption for that animal? Well, in order to qualify for an intact animal permit, you would need to have the microchip as well. And so we wouldn't be wrongfully spaying or neutering an animal that would otherwise be exempt, if that makes sense. There were some revisions or proposed revisions rather to the community cat and community cat caretaker standards. This next one is important. Number 12, Las Cruces Municipal Court would have more clearly defined authority regarding dangerous dog and potentially dangerous dog designations with the authority to enforce handling and registration requirements. So as we stand here right now, the Las Cruces Municipal Court does have the authority to make those designations with regard to dangerous dogs or potentially dangerous dogs, assuming that the city has met its evidentiary requirement. But something that I've heard over the past couple of years is our, our judges and the municipal court saying, well, Brad, we don't feel like our current municipal code really gives us the authority to impose any sort of sanction if someone does not abide by the registration and handling requirements of, for example, a potentially dangerous dog. In this draft, that's been cleaned up. And then lastly, there are some clarified reclamation requirements for ASCMV. And this, this list is not exhaustive, but I do feel like it is, it hits a lot of the high points of the proposed changes. And so the overall goal is to achieve a more comprehensive municipal code that prevents animal suffering within the city, improves public health, welfare, and safety, and addresses, should be addresses, overpopulation concerns, to empower animal control officers in their duties, to remove ambiguity and confusing language where possible, to reduce unnecessary euthanasia within the city, and to identify appropriate exceptions or exemptions for mandatory spay and neuter if that were to pass. So what are some factors to consider? Well, as best I've identified, I do think it's important to note that mandatory spay and neuter requirements have been held to be constitutional in New Mexico. That's a question that has come up. It has been adjudicated in Albuquerque. Another factor to consider is the goal should be to avoid criminalizing otherwise responsible pet owners who may be unable to afford mandatory spay and neuter procedures. So the city of Las Cruces has allocated $80,000 to assist with spay and neuter expenses for individuals who may qualify based on their income levels. And so shout out to Councilor Corin, I believe that she was very instrumental in getting that to come to pass. And so that is, you know, an option that we could utilize in the future. Of course, we cannot necessarily bind future governing bodies to an annual output for that, for that requirement. Another factor to consider is whether or not there's an availability of qualified veterinarian professionals to perform spay and neuter within the city. It's my understanding that we are attempting, or rather, ASCMV is attempting to fill some of that need. As I've already discussed, whether or not there should be a complete prohibition on the tethering of companion animals versus significant limitations on the practice. If, a big if, mandatory spay and neuter were to be adopted, I would recommend that the requirement have delayed enforcement, for example, 12 to 18 months or any other time period as deemed appropriate by city council. Would also recommend that if that comes to pass, there be an initial period of community education and outreach rather than enforcement right away. Something that our working group has, has discussed is what this would look like if that requirement were codified. And Gino can correct me if I'm wrong, but I don't believe that Animal Control has the resources to go around knocking on doors, asking to inspect everyone's companion animal to see if it's been spayed and neutered. What we envisioned is this would be something that takes place at the impoundment phase. So something to consider. Whether fees collected pursuant to this chapter should be remitted to the general fund or redirected to the ASCMV, that was a question that's come up before this body before, frankly, above my pay grade to, to make a recommendation on that. But, but really, I think that it all boils down to the very last bullet point here, striking the balance between protecting vulnerable animals, should read companion animals, well, all animals, I suppose, and upholding public safety while not penalizing lower-income owners. And as I stated when I first got here, I would, I would just like to have a conversation with you all and see what your concerns are, what you would like to see. And I guess we're only at a work session, but I, I think it's important to empower council through, through comment and that's what we're here for.
Thank you so much, Brad. Thank you. Yes, Councilor Corin.
Thank you. Thank you, Brad, and thanks to Lieutenant Wiedler and Gino and the animal advocates that I know worked on this for a very long time and have been having these conversations. And thanks for wading into this, to this venture. I think I shared a lot of those and I feel like you brought a lot of my, my concerns to, to the fore, which is, I, I think we have, we are against capacity in a number of spaces and I think we have to build in things to address those capacity-related issues. That is spay and neuter capacity, we have like three or four tools that we can use, that we're using to varying degrees of ability, that I think we need to. that we're using to varying degrees of ability, that I think we need to put more effort into, and that's partly why I believe the delayed enforcement is important. Educational period, which would allow people to, would allow perhaps us to expand that capacity in a number of ways, more meaningfully. But I also think, to me, I really want to know that, I mean, we're on the ASCMV board, we know that most animals that go to the ASCMV, which the city funds, come from animal control, right? And so, that capacity there is strained, there are too many animals going in, which is fundamentally the issue, right? Like, that's why we don't want any more animals to be born. That's why mandatory spay and neuter is a question of our budget, I would argue, because right now, we're subsidizing spay and neuters on the back end of animals going into ASCMV. So like, where are we paying for this? But I do want to not create a situation that leads to higher rates of impoundment to the Animal Services Center, taking animals away from people who otherwise would care for their animals. And that's why even the tethering conversation, I think, is a really tough one, because animals getting loose out of people's yards is a huge problem, and those folks aren't necessarily bad pet owners, patently, I don't think. And so I think, for me, I am really glad we're having this conversation, and I think we can keep having this conversation, but for me, those are the things that I see as measures and I want us to protect against. That is punishing low-income homeowners who can't, or pet owners, sorry, who can't afford this, or, you know, it's an eight-week, at best, eight-week, $300 venture to get one animal in the market spayed or neutered, probably. So that's a very, that's a capacity issue, right? That's something that we, it's incumbent on us to address if we're going to compel people to do that. And then also making sure that we're not creating a situation where we're increasing the population going to the animals ASCMV inadvertently, because we've written something into our ordinances that leads to animals being removed from homes that otherwise would be able to care for them. So for me, those are the two big things that I think are achievable in this conversation, and I think just having this conversation and even saying we value spaying and neutering, and I would argue microchipping should be a very similar thing, like, we should be microchipping just the same as we, because only about 15%, right, Gino, of all the animals that they pick up have microchips, so we don't even know who they belong to to get them to spay or neuter. So I guess, for me, I think having this conversation now, thinking about updating our ordinance and the conversations that would happen in the educational period, would, and us making a concerted effort to fund spay and neuter in the various ways that we can try to. For me, those are the things that I'm concerned about in this, and I feel like this draft does a really good job of addressing some of those things. So I just want to speak to my desire for this to be about building capacity and not creating capacity issues in the community and/or at our shelter. So those are the two values that I really hope we can make sure come through in this conversation, and I feel like you all have done a really good job of trying to get to that space. So, thank you to you and everyone who's been working on this really hard, and so, I would like to hear more, I'm curious to hear what other folks are saying and what folks are thinking, but I really appreciate you all working on this.
Thank you, Councilor Corin.
Thanks, Brad. Yes, Councilor Flores.
Thank you, and thank you, City Attorney Brad Douglas. First of all, I just want to say I'm happy to see that there's a balance here. I've been active with the animals, you know, this committee, for, well, it was for about seven years, and we did the thing, you know, the whole thing about how many members should be there, and Becky Graham stepped up, so that was wonderful. So we have these two on the board, these two, the two Beckys. And, but I know that, I know that the community who is in support, who, these are all animal lovers, and we spent a lot of time reviewing, reviewing the, what was it, the statutes or the requirements, and, you know, we spent a lot of time talking about what constitutes a bird, a chicken, and horses, and, you know, all that sort of stuff, but we're focusing only now on pets. Is that correct? Or is it going to be a total revamp?
Mayor Protem, Councilor Flores, what I think that this proposed draft does is it is a comprehensive overhaul, which does not mean that all of our existing code is going away. Away, I don't necessarily want that, but I do think that the majority of the provisions would apply to companion animals, but it is not solely for companion animals.
So is this going to be a revision within the statutes we have now?
Yes, Counselor.
So, on page seven, can you go back to page seven, Mr. Douglas?
No, I cannot.
You cannot? What the huda?
Hang on, there we go.
Okay, this is where I get dazed and confused. In paragraph two, or the second, you know, bullet point, it is recommended that the requirement have delayed enforcement, i.e. 12 hyphen 18 months, or any other time period as deemed appropriate by council. So, it meant, this is kind of ambiguous to me, because is the 12 to 18 months from the time they, an owner gets a dog, or is it 12 to 18 months in terms of the age of the pet? And I'll tell you why, because my son had a beautiful, or, yeah, she's still around, Sheba Inyo, and actually, he had the Minpin, miniature pincher. His roommate had a beautiful Sheba Inyo, and my son kept telling his roommate to get her spayed, and he said, "No, she's too young, she's only, you know, only a few months old." Well, lo and behold, she, my son's dog Dexter made love to her, and they produced one baby, and I have that baby now. But the point, though, is that she was only six months old, and so that's the part that I find, you know, have delayed enforcement, and whose enforcement against, I mean, how, I don't know how we can supervise this, I mean.
Sure.
It's not what?
It's not related to age.
Well, no, well, but it's 12 to 18 months of what?
So...
Till we, when we pass the ordinance, till we start doing enforcement.
Okay, well then, so this is, this language here is not part of the new provisions of statute.
No, Counselor, but it can be. What I was...
Okay, well, then that really scares me.
If it's ambiguous, that's my fault. What I meant to say here was that if the City of Las Cruces, meaning you all, eventually adopt a mandatory spay and neuter policy, that no enforcement of that mandatory spay and neuter ordinance be enforced for a time period as identified by you all, and I would recommend, in the interim, whatever that time period is, if it were to pass, that LCPD and Animal Control engage in community outreach and education.
Okay, I think we're going to have a lot of puppies running around, but thank you.
And Counselor, just to clarify a little, the proposed, in this draft, and like I said, it's a draft, it's not set in stone, for good reason, and I'm going off of my memory, but I believe the recommended age for, for example, a feline, a cat, is five months or more, which I believe comports with most national standards and recommendations. For smaller breeds of canines, I believe that it's four, possibly five months or older, and then for larger breeds of dogs, so as not to stunt growth, I believe that it would be nine months or older, is the current recommendation.
Thank you. Any other folks on the council? Yes, Councilor Matisse.
Brad, I was just going to ask you, if we can get to passing this pretty quickly, correct? If we're pleased with the overdraft and the overhaul? And then you want 12 months, or 18 months, where the departments will educate and get the word out about the new law, correct?
Mayor Protem, Counselor Matisse, that's what I would recommend, you know, whenever there's, whenever there's a legislative change that could have wide-reaching effect like this, not always, but usually, I prefer sort of a phased-in approach or delayed implementation, so that we can do our due diligence and educate the members of our community with regard to what their new responsibilities might be.
Okay, and then, going back to YU, so with this planned education, who will be in charge of that, and do you have any idea of the planning and what will, how it will be implemented, with veterinarians, citywide, web, social media, pet owners? Is there a plan already in force that's going to be immediately used as we approve this?
Counselor Matisse, with regard to who would engage in education and outreach, I think that probably most appropriately, LCPD and/or, well, it's an and, Animal Control, our subject matter experts, our boots on the ground, the people that it would affect the most. Of course, I'd be happy to volunteer my services to help in any way that I can, but as far as an educational campaign, I think that it would be most appropriately up to Animal Control and/or PD.
Do we have any idea, do we have any words on the plan that anybody want to speak for?
We have concepts of a plan, Counselor Matisse.
Far too soon, Brad. It's far too soon.
Go ahead, Lieutenant.
I'm ready to listen to concepts.
Lieutenant Joy Whedle, Mayor Protem, Counselor Matisse, yes, I would agree with Brad here that we have conceptualized the whole process, however, nothing has been sort of written in stone, so to speak. I think first and foremost, we want to see if the ordinance is actually passed, to come up with a final draft, and then take our next steps from there. But this is why we are highly suggesting that we do have an educational process, similar to any other ordinances that have changed within the city. We need to get the education out to the people, whether that be through social media, but a lot of the time, it can even be through projects on foot. In other words, going into the neighborhoods and addressing the neighborhoods that we see could potentially be possibly more of a concern regarding this area, that maybe they don't have spayed and neutered animals, and making sure that we're educating individuals when it will be implemented and when it will take place.
No, I like that idea, and that's, working with the neighborhood associations would be ideal. You know, my first month on the job, I had to go after a pack of dogs, you know, that had been roaming and killing cats and over there on Good Shepherd and Union Drive, and, you know, it was five or six dogs, and it took a couple of, I think it took maybe four or five weeks to address that. And so, I think that's very important, that we work in the neighborhoods, because that's where I get most of my calls from. You know, we have one neighbor that his dog has been loose now 13 times, you know, so I think the overhaul for this ordinance and getting it passed is very important to the residents, so, thank you all. I want to thank you, and Brad, Legal Department, and Animal Control, and the Police Department for getting this on the books as quick as possible. Thank you.
We appreciate that, sir. And just along those lines, yes, we could potentially even use more of our stratified policing models and looking at the statistics as far as where those stray animals, like you mentioned, are coming from, so.
Thank you. Anyone else?
I have a question.
I'm gonna go, and then I'm gonna bring it back to you.
Okay, yes, of course.
Thanks, Brad, and thanks to all of you for getting us here. I know it's been a long, long time coming. I personally think that I can get behind most of this. I have pretty serious concerns about mandatory spay and neuter policies, and I'll tell you why. One of the biggest things is that I think we can do that kind of programming without mandatory spay and neuter. We can do the kind of educational programming that we're talking about without using the criminal justice system to try to get to our goal. The other thing I will say is that, in all my research, consistently I find animal advocacy organizations speaking out against mandatory policy. The ASPCA against mandatory policy. The Best Friends against it. The National Animal Interest Alliance against it. I found this other one, the No Kill Movement against it. The American Veterinary Medical Association against it. The data consistently shows that mandatory policies do not work and in fact have disproportionate impacts on poor people. So I feel like a little bit deja vu, Brad, that I'm sitting here in front of you, again, saying this policy has an unintended, intended consequence on disproportionately poor folks. And we can think about more creative solutions than just going through municipal court and then just giving poor folks another ticket, and before we, hopefully, in the future, get rid of the $100 failure-to-a-peer warrant, that is just a debtor's court. So, it, like, these kinds of policies are not, have not shown the evidence to say that they are actually reducing the number of animals on the street, like, the goal, these kinds of mandatory policies are not getting us to where we want to. So let's look at things that are. Otherwise, I think I can get behind most of this, and I will look more into the tether piece, but honestly, I struggle with that, because that's how I got my dog. My little baby Santo was tethered for a very long time in this man's home, and that's how he came to the shelter before we adopted him. And so, I, again, I feel like I can get behind the majority of this proposal, but I will not be able to support a mandatory spay and neuter, and I just need to say that right now, because I think it's, I think it will have perhaps an opposite impact. And I think that we can, even with the tether piece, or the loose piece, you know, and I'm throwing a curveball here a little bit, but the Source of Income Discrimination Ordinance we passed last year, a couple of years ago, codes and housing policy approach that policy with landlords in a very educational manner and not a punitive manner, because we know that that's actually what is most effective in getting people to comply with new policies, is through education and not punitive measures. So I will stand strongly by that and hope that we can come to a positive and civil meeting agreement place on this, because that's just not something that I can support at this moment, but everything else, I think, that I'm able to.
Thank you, Mayor Protem, that actually is helpful input, I appreciate it.
Thank you. Any other, we won't, I, yeah, we'll take, I'll take public comment in a little bit. We're not done with the council comments yet. Go ahead.
Thank you. Well, I am not sure I'm, after hearing Mayor Protem about the downside of mandatory spay and neuter, I'm not sure I'm behind it, however, anyway, but, so, has the, well, it's kind of like, it's not really an organization, the Animal Service Center, or, excuse me, the, anyway, has there been any effort to form a 501(c)(3) to fund the spay and neuter, the spaying and neutering of animals? Is anybody here in the organization that could speak to that?
Counselor, I can't speak to that right now with regard to a 501(c)(3) formed by advocates. As I stated earlier, Councilor Corin was instrumental in getting the $80,000 appropriation for SNAP recipients, and that should be to fund either free or reduced-cost spay and neuter. I think that's a great thing.
Yeah, yeah.
Of course, whether or not it's sufficient, well, it's not sufficient, because, sorry, that sounded really harsh, Councilor Corin, that's not what I meant. It's a great, it's a great move forward, but of course, the funding need is probably in excess of that, is what I wanted to say.
Yeah, well, unless there's a fund that's... Yeah, yeah, well, unless there's a fund that's going to pay for that, the spaying and the neutering, I don't under, yeah, it's going to be hard on a lot of people. So, yeah, anyway, thank you, Brad.
Thank you, Councilor.
Okay, any other members of the council? Okay.
I'll wait till after.
Okay, perfect. Councilor McClure?
Okay.
Okay. So now I will take members of the public, and we'll do two minutes. If you represent an organization and want to have one person come up, that'd be wonderful. Otherwise, we'll do two minutes per person. And please don't forget to state your name.
Kathy Stark with Animal Advocates for Change, Crazy Cat Lady, Childless. Mayor Pro Tem, City Councilor, I wanted to address the points that you raised with the national organizations. If you dig into those studies, what they are saying, and what we have been saying all along, is that you need to remove the barriers for those low-income people, which is, number one, phase it in, number two, there has to be some funding, and there is $80,000, and we thank you for that. We have a very generous community, we've got some rescues here that will tell you, they'll put up six dogs on next door and say, "I need $75 apiece for spay-neuter racks," and within 24 to 48 hours, they've got it. So the whole goal of the phase-in period is to, number one, build that capacity, and we presented some ideas in the past of how we can do that. Number two, look at the funding, look at the vacant position at the ASCMV, because they're doing an extraordinary job. The other thing that you need to understand is state law, and our current ordinance states that when you reclaim an animal from the ASCMV, you either get a, you get it spayed, neutered, or get a voucher and have it done, or you get an intact permit. So it's really nothing different there. We've talked with Animal Control, the intent is not to go into the community and say, "Oh, that dog's, looks like it's intact, you've gotta get a, you've gotta get it spayed and neutered," or here's a citation. It's to connect those people to the resource programs that we're trying to build, to eliminate the provisions which the national organizations say, "Yeah, if you don't do this, it's a barrier and it penalizes people that shouldn't be penalized." So we've tried to build that into the whole thing. Thank you.
Anyone else?
Jerry Willis, Animal Advocates for Change. Just to dovetail on what Kathy said, I think if you read the studies closely that Mayor Pro Tem cited, you'll notice again that it was not, that mandatory spay-neuter does not work. It does not work if it's not funded. If you expect low-income people to pay for it themselves, yeah, it's not gonna work. City has to back these programs with funding, and that was what the bottom line of the studies stated, too. But mandatory spay-neutering does lower intake at shelters, it does obviously lower population controls, there are many, many benefits to it with spay and neuter. And I think if you thoroughly read the studies, and we can also provide you with other ones, and the proposed ordinance, you will also come to that conclusion. Thanks.
Others? Yeah, please come on down and make a line, please.
Hi, my name's Stuart David, I'm a newbie, I've been here about six months. I worked on, I didn't expect to talk today. I worked on similar ordinances when I lived in rural North Carolina. And a little quick note on tethering is, when I did a deep dive on some research there on anti-tethering laws, I really expected to see that they were from California or Massachusetts or from really liberal areas. If you take a look, it's the opposite. They were from mostly the rural, deep south, and they were almost always in response to somebody getting maimed or killed by a chained dog. And it was, you know, it was usually a, happened after the fact, and it's really a public health issue, too, because dogs that are chained are so antisocial, kids get in the yard, they get mauled, and then they pass a law. So, I just wanted to bring that up. But what I really want to talk about was spay-neuter. Again, we passed similar ordinances in rural North Carolina, Buncombe, and then later in Asheville, and mandatory is a scary word. I know it is, and we saw that word, too. But first place, this isn't mandatory, because A, you can get an intact animal person, and B, nobody's going door-to-door, it's only if there's a problem with the animal, and C, you can have a letter from a veterinarian, too. So, you know, don't let mandatory scare you. And also, the people that came up here, traveled up here from, or down here, I'm sorry, from Santa Fe, you seem to all nod and support this $30 million for sheltering for animal welfare, and I hope you do, I think that's a great deal. But I'd also like to point out that in the end, we really want less sheltering. That's what we want, is less money for sheltering. And if we get behind spay-neuter, you know, that's gonna be our outcome. And you saw the dogs, the dog Jesse, that dog, and Jesse said he likes to chase his tail, and unless you do spay-neuter and really do it aggressively, you're just chasing your tail. That's the way we're gonna do it. Thank you.
Thank you. I just want to clear up any perhaps miscommunication. I believe in spay-neuter, I'm not saying that I don't believe in spay-neuter programs. Okay, great. Okay, come on down.
Mayor Pro Tem, City Council, thank you for this time. My name is Jim Wilcox. Let me tell you a story about Tony. Tony loves to run in the park, and he likes to run up and scare children, and engage in casual sex. And so, he's running around, because Tony is a six-year-old dog, and he's part setter, part lab, and so, he's been doing this for a number of years. And now Tony has about six little puppies that he's fathered. He's not paying any puppy support, and there's out there, running around, and now, since it's been so long, some of those puppies have grown up and they're doing the same thing. There's now 22 descendants of Tony, and Tony gets out. You know, his owners, they try, they block up, so you can see the bricks are put up, and he still figures out a way to get out. So when you take care of the problem at this stage, you remove the problem for the future. And one of the things that I think is important to understand is, how many chances do we give somebody to take care of the problem before we say, "We've given you enough chances"? And if it's, if two times is, you know, not enough, maybe it's three times, or X number of times in a certain amount of, a period of time. But something needs to be done, we shouldn't be held, hands, you know, our hands should not be held tied because there's some potential problems. When you're passing legislation, don't make it so hard that it's so strict, restrictive, you don't do anything. Because, as an adage is, that it's better to do something than to plan many things that you never do. Thank you.
Any other folks want to speak on this? Come on up, Clint.
Clint Thacker, Executive Director, Animal Service Center. For the mandatory spay-neuter, we are, the ASCMV is in favor of the ordinance, however, we are very concerned about the compliance of this ordinance, so the ordinance change. How are people gonna be compliant when we ourselves, ASCMV, is, we are backlog for surgeries, ourselves? We cannot, we have a veterinarian shortage nationally, it's not regional, it's a national issue. We have veterinarian, or we cannot fill this veterinarian position that we have. The, so my worry is that is of compliance. The next one that I worried about is something that was said earlier about the ASC, or it's, it will be upon, enforcement will be upon impound. That means the animals are at the ASCMV. We have no jurisdiction to enforce any ordinance, we're not an enforcing agency. So, that will have to fall back on Animal Control in some way or another, to be clear on that. I don't, I don't want anything extra for our staff to have to do for that part. And then the next one is, there is also an issue with community cats that are in this ordinance, where it still has a river, a river ordinance that says it can't be, a feral or community cat cannot be released within a half-mile of the city, of the river. And that's an issue for us. We, it takes a lot of resources to relocate a cat. It's not taking it to another place and just releasing it. It is a resource burden experience or issue that is very difficult to complete. So, again, we are in favor, but we're worried about the who, the who, what, when, why, and how, basically. So, thank you.
Thanks, Clint. Certainly don't want to put any pressure on our animal protection voters, visitors, but if there's any feedback you'd want to provide, that'd be great. Oh, great, okay. And then I'll come back to you in the front.
Thank you, Mayor Pro Tem and councilors. I take your point, Mayor Pro Tem, that the national organizations do have.
Can you please state your name?
I'm so sorry, I'll start again. Yes, Stacy Sutton Kirby, Animal Protection Voters. Thank you so much for asking for us to weigh in. First of all, I want to say that the national organizations do take a different perspective than state-level organizations and local government, city, city council members, and that's because at the national level, they're not operating shelters and operating animal control. I would agree with the folks who have stepped up to the mic to say that taking the balanced approach of, A, having a grace period, an educational window, phasing in an ordinance, as well as providing resources to people so that they can come into compliance, is what we've seen, what I've seen in my experience as an advocate. That's where you get the best results. The point is not to give people tickets, to make it unaffordable for someone to have a companion animal, and certainly not to cause a situation where an animal would be relinquished to the shelter because a person couldn't come into compliance. So the communities where we've seen it work the best are where folks come together. It sounds like there's already $80,000 in SNAP, a spay-neuter action program, and planning out that timeline with those resources and getting that educational campaign out there, that's where we have seen it work the best.
Thank you for your feedback. Come on up.
Hi, I'm Cheryl Hane. I'm the Director of Animal Spaces Rescue here in town, and I just want to say that the lack of this is causing such a pressure on those of us who spend our lives trying to help these animals. We're not paid, it's our money. We have probably four rescues who have worked together on getting dogs up to TRC to Dr. Alred, who's a wonderful vet, by the way, to get spayed and neutered. We've done, between the four of us, I know we've done well over 500 a year. Your spay-and-neuter program here in town has done 1,000 in the last year that they reported. So, we're equally working on that to the best of our ability. I, my experience has not been that people don't want to spay and neuter their pet. My experience has been they can't afford it, so I, I understand that. But, when given an option that's affordable and doable, and they can have help with it, we get very little pushback. I have had maybe three people who just, we had one, let it spay all the females, but didn't want its male spayed. That, I think, was a cultural thing on his side, but in general, we go talk to some of the, we've done several hoarding cases with the county Animal Control, where we've gone in, we fixed them, we've chipped them, we've gotten them their shots, we've taken the puppies and got them out of state. My rescue, one of our big initiatives, is to get most of these animals out of here completely. I go all the way to Delaware, and Connecticut, and Wyoming, I've been all over the place to take animals, because they don't have puppies there, because they have spay and neuter. I don't like the word mandatory, because it's not 100%, and they can tell you that. I like comprehensive instead.
Thank you. Okay, oh, yes, one more person.
Diane Starbuck, for the record. I am with Animal Advocates for Change. I'd like to address Clint Thacker's concern about there not being enough veterinarians here, or that he feels that the whole thing is gonna be put on the animal shelter. That's not true. We have spoke to six local vets who are willing to do weekend clinics here. There is a MASH organization willing to come down to Las Cruces and do 200 animals a weekend. And there has been interest within the state of other vets coming down to Las Cruces to help us out also. So, I think this could all be worked out. The resources are here. If you look for them, the resources are here, and yet, it's logistic and financial, but I feel those issues could be worked out. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, anybody else? I urge you to come down now, or forever hold your peace.
Thank you, my name is Sarah Smith. I support spay and neuter as well, but I as well am concerned about the word mandatory and about criminalization around this particular issue. If enforcement is only happening through Animal Control, I think you're gonna have a very low number of people who are jumping up to say, "I want to go get my pet spayed or neutered." If you use education, if people knew how many animals were dying in the shelter regularly, I think that would help people understand the problem better. And if there was a way for you to do free spay-neuter, or even offer an incentive, I don't know if you could do $50 on your utility bill, you would have people lining up to say, "We want to get our animals spayed and neutered," instead of trying to use the force of law and going through this other path, which really, to me, doesn't seem like you're gonna get very many people who are wanting to do that, if you're just trying to rely on Animal Control. So, I am hoping that you guys can maybe look at some of those other approaches. This is one of the few times, probably, that Counselor Bingomo and I are on the same page, but I have some serious concerns over using criminalization, petty misdemeanors, potential for fines, potential for jail time, along with this. I don't think that that quite makes sense in the context of this, so I'm hoping that you can find something that's maybe a little bit more nuanced than going that direction. Thank you.
Please, don't forget to state your name.
My name is Brenda Browning, and my first time at a council meeting, my first time speaking in public in this town. I have another point that I would like everyone to consider. We're talking about tethering. Consider a senior alone in a house, she has her favorite pet, she's not rich enough to own the house, it's a landlord's house, she doesn't have a fence, the dog needs to go outside, needs to go potty, may or may not be willing to use a potty pad, because, trust me, they don't like it. The obvious, simple solution is a small tether near the back door, she can clip it on, she doesn't have to take that step down into the yard, that may be a risk to her health and safety. She can tether her dog, allow it out for 15, 20 minutes, and bring it back in. If you mandate no tethering, she has to give up her dog. She has to live alone. I want you to consider it.
Thank you, ma'am. Brad, do you want to touch on the tethering piece for clarification for her?
Sure. Mayor Pro Tem, Council. With regard to the tethering, the way that the proposal is written now would allow for very limited tethering, tethering wouldn't be eliminated altogether, I believe. Under the proposed language, tethering would be allowed for up to one hour a day.
Thank you, Brad. Thank you. Okay. Please state your name.
Mary Rodriguez, community member. Thank you for allowing me to speak, everyone. I want to talk about both the tethering issue and the spay-neuter mandatory word. First, on the tethering, I had a deaf dog, and I'm a huge animal advocate, have been my whole life, and I had this deaf dog, but I lived in a rural community where I didn't have, there was no fences. And so, when I let him out, and I walked him, he got plenty of exercise, but when I let him out, I put him on a trolley, and unfortunately, he would run to the end of it, and he messed up his neck. And I've always felt horrible. And I've always felt horrible about that because it's my fault that he did that. And so that's my lesson on tethering. So, and then as far as the spay and neuter goes, you've all probably heard, I did come from a city in California where spay, where mandatory spay and neuter had been in effect since the 90s. And what that looks like after a long period of time, and nobody thinks about people who don't spay and neuter as criminals, ever. That's just, that's just not what we do. It's just that it's, when something is, is considered the right thing to do, they just do it. It's like when you put a new stop sign in, people aren't going to run it. They're just going to eventually do it. And so the education piece is totally relevant. But I just feel like I need to say it's, it works. I, we watched, we watched the shelters go from like 400, like here we have 400 dogs, there in the county has the same amount of people and their full shelter is like 40 dogs because there's not having puppies and kittens left and right. And there aren't stray animals running around. And I mean, I had notes on, from next door, of all the ridiculous things that I see there because there's just too many animals in this community. That's all. Thank you.
Thank you, Mary. Okay, last, last person? Ma'am, are you also speaking? Okay. Oh my goodness, okay. She'll be the last, last, last one.
Okay, my name is Susan Richardson and I'm really new to this cause. And I just want to say, this is my first council meeting. Usually I'm at county meetings because that's where I live, out in county. And all the work that has been put in by everyone on this subject is, is just phenomenal to me. Because for the longest time, I've been here since 1984. And for the longest time, I look at the numbers that are coming out of the animal shelter from, even from August to September to October. And they just keep growing and growing and growing. And, and listening to the people that work with this on a daily basis, okay? There's not enough manpower, there's not enough resources, there's not enough money, there's not enough, there's not education. So I really want you to support these efforts and these bills because we got to start somewhere. And yes, we have state laws and we have this and we have that. But I feel like now we're honing in and revising them and updating them and making sure that there aren't any loopholes. But one thing I didn't hear today was the fact that in some of these cases that have been videotaped, there's a big discrepancy when people are viewing them from what the rescuers see versus what animal control sees. So in the future, I would like to, to have, you know, delve into, into the procedures for animal control and what constitutes animal abuse. Because there was an 18-month-old dog, a year and a half, and she looked like she was nine or 10. And she had to be wheeled out of animal control, not animal control, out of the shelter in a wagon. And she looked like she was 10 years old and she was only 18 months.
Thank you, ma'am. Your time's up.
Thanks.
Hello, Council. Thank you for listening to me. I was not expecting to get up here and say anything, but--
Please state your name.
Oh, I'm sorry. April Nastazi, April's Q911 Academy. And what nobody is bringing aware is we've had three human deaths and an arm amputation in the last three years. Our dog bite numbers have increased by 200%. The Animal Service Center is adopting out aggressive dogs, known biters. I've had clients that have gotten them and they're not, I don't believe they're educating them well enough. But not saying that's bad on them. Our dogs nowadays are highly sensitive. You and I grew up where you could throw a pot lid on the ground and the dogs go, "Hey, what is that?" Nowadays, you drop a pot lid and they're like, "Oh my God, it almost ate me." Our dogs are highly sensitive. And then our people kill themselves. How many people killed themselves during COVID? We've been fear mongered and who feels their energy? The dogs feel the people's energy. They react. I specialize in aggressive behaviors. I specialize now in energy work to help not only the dog, but the person. And it's education. I have so many people that come to me that they don't know that those little behaviors that the dog's doing is a telltale sign that if they don't stop it and give the dog parameters, it's going to get worse. Okay, and so I just wanted to let everybody know this. I haven't been here in two years. I did give them the Veterinary Association. They do have a pamphlet, well, it's a thick book. And they've had all the lawyers, they've had all the veterinarians teach communities how to lower dog bite numbers. And I gave it to this council two years ago. Don't know what happened to it. One of the council members, Gondara, I believe, said she wanted to hear about my program because I do a free workshop once a month to teach people how to interact with their aggressive dog and how to interact with that dog with other dogs and people because dogs are afraid of dogs, people. And if you're really unlucky, both, okay? Because they're highly sensitive. And she set up a meeting with Lieutenant Wataia and she listened to me for an hour, says, "I wear three hats. We don't have the time, place, or anything, but I'm willing to teach. I've been doing this for over 18 years. So if I can help some way, thank you very much."
Thank you. I do just want, can I just say one thing and then I'll pass it to you? I just do want to clarify that I think it's important that we are very clear about this kind of ordinance because I heard a couple folks say it's not about ticketing, you're not making people criminals. However, the section under penalties says, "Any person who violates a provision of this ordinance shall be deemed guilty of a crime," thus giving someone a criminal record. So I do, I don't want us to be naive about what this ordinance is and what, and what these kinds of penalties can bring to someone when they are very much about disproportionately putting poor folks through the criminal justice system. Okay, yes, Counselor Graham.
Thanks. Just wanted to take a moment to share. I appreciate, Mayor Protam, you kind of sharing where you are in the moment and I wanted to do the same. How I see this, this is my third year on council, almost done. And I feel like this is the issue that has simultaneously the most passion and the most inertia. And I think that we, and I am as guilty of this as anyone, and it's such a cliche too, where you sacrifice progress for perfect. No ordinances are perfect. No plans are perfect. And at the end of the day, it all comes down to people. One thing, before I forget, Lieutenant Wiedler, one thing I will be interested to hear is exactly what Mayor Protam was speaking to and that is your discretion in your role as a law enforcement officer. I understand the concern that you have is completely true and completely real. And I do want to hear what discretion law enforcement officers would have should we pass this ordinance in terms of, you know, does it have to be automatically, no, that's it? It's a fine, it's jail, it's whatever? So just kind of, do you want to say something now? Or, I mean, I'm not putting you on the spot now. Okay, awesome. Thank you. Where I see this as an opportunity, and I'm looking at that 12 to 18 months because there's a little screen here on the side of the podium too that I'm looking at. We have, should this ordinance pass, we have 12 to 18 months for education. We have 12 to 18 months to get funding in order. We have 12 to 18 months to finally find an umbrella for all of you sitting in here today and all of the hundreds of other people who are not here today, but who have the passion and are probably not here today because they're just not doing the work. I see this as an opportunity for the city to finally step up and create, create the space where we can all work together toward a common goal. And it's just one of those things, I've just finally reached the point where we're not going to do anything unless we do something. And that's kind of where I am right now. Lieutenant Wiedler, that was it. I would love to hear from you if you have anything. Or, awesome, thank you.
Lieutenant Wiedler, Mayor Protam, Counselor Graham, I agree with you. I do believe that inaction is not the way to go and that we do need to take action on an ordinance. I think we've heard an overwhelming concern today in reference to whether we classify that spay and neuter as mandatory. I think that's probably what needs to be addressed the most. I think with that, what studies you go to, you will discover that it isn't going to be an education component. There does have to be obviously the veterinary services within the area as well. And so again, my thought is that it's not simple as passing an ordinance. It also takes action on a much larger scale to include potentially even some budget funding. With that, again, what are the next steps?
What, are you asking me?
No, just kidding, just kidding.
Again, this is one of those things where we've proposed this ordinance. It's in draft status. Obviously, as in draft status, it can change. But like any other, I think, larger concern within our community, it's going to take more than just the ordinance.
Thank you so much. Thank you. Anyone else? Go ahead.
Just real quickly, because I know we've been here for a while, but I just want to thank you guys very much for coming out and showing your support for this. I just want to say that over my time, almost a year, that it's been people who have made change. To a large extent, it's us up here, but it's people who are working together that affect change. And I just want to thank you guys for coming. That's all. Thanks.
Brad, any last words? Go ahead, Counselor Flotis.
I want to thank all of you here, some faces. In fact, Jerry Willis, I didn't recognize you. You cut your hair, you dyed it. It's like you've lost your personality. But people in the, in the audience have been here the whole time. And then Kathy Stark, who's a real, you know, go-getter. But I really want to thank all of you in Greta for your tenacity, your perseverance. And I think, I hope that will, I hope we really do reach a resolution on this issue. And, but most of all, I just want to thank all of you for, for doing this for the community and for animals that we love so much. Thank you.
Thank you. Yeah, thank you for mentioning that. I mean, I think we don't have to agree on every single line in here for me to feel deeply, deeply grateful for the advocacy that you all do. So thank you very much. Brad, anything else?
Mayor Protam, Council. I think this was a helpful exercise. I understand, I was going to say I understand most of the, I understand all of the concerns that have been voiced from this dais today. I do, and we will continue working. Progress is not always linear. Sometimes it's a little cer, you know, cer, it's a circuit, that's the word. And we will, we will keep working. And thank you all for your time and attention. I'd like to thank LCPD and animal control and our community advocates and community partners as well. Thank you.
Thanks, Brad. And that'll be it for today. Can I get a motion adjourned?
So moved.
Second, Graham. Thank you.
This is on the motion to adjourn the work session. Counselor McClure?
Yes.
Counselor Matisse?
Yes.
Counselor Graham?
Yes.
Counselor Kran is absent. Counselor Flotis?
Yes.
Mayor Protam?
Yes.
And the mayor's absent.